It is six thirty. I will call to order the November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five board of selection. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everybody had a good weekend and welcome to winter. Any questions on the manifest for November tenth?
I think I'm all good.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest. Uh, eleven-ten, twenty-twenty-five. And the counts, yeah, the counts payable and payroll of eleven-ten, twenty-twenty-five.
On second?
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, that's the minutes. Nope, that's just the date of the minutes, the way it was there, so I was just double checking.
Good emotion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. October twenty-seventh, budget planning workshop meeting minutes and November third, two thousand twenty-five, public meeting minutes.
I have, oop, Jesus. So I had a couple things on the ten-twenty-seven. Hopefully the lines are the same from the online copy. Line nine-eight. Shouldn't that be seventy-five percent?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, line one-thirty, one-thirty-one. Uh, the chief indicated that he was not looking to add to the salary line just the number of people. I, I think we probably should, um, insert overall in there.
Yep.
Overall, overall salary line. Line one-seventy. Uh, that should be, uh, police chief Fawn, wasn't it, not Dawn? And two-eighty-four. That should be. Was it two-eighty-four? It should be Marion with no Y at the end, right? That's what I had. Twenty-seventh. I hadn't finished the third yet. I was mostly through it.
Anybody have anything else on the twenty-seventh?
Motion for the minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
On second.
For ten-twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's your one of change.
Do you want to hold off?
Yeah, can we?
Third meeting then?
Yeah, can we hold off a little bit or whatever? Yeah, I didn't get a chance to finish them.
Why don't we just push that to the next meeting? Okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Afternoon report on recreation or the recycling center, what we've already discussed?
I would say the rec did a great job organizing the flag football tournament.
Parkin, was that an issue?
The only issue was really cold.
It was super cold, it was so cold.
Yep, and there's kids out there, like some of them in their shorts and T-shirts and I'm like.
Yep, and then some would play, then ref, then play, then ref, they were there, all there. I left several times to go by my wig still, I was like, you're on your own dude, like if you want to sit here, you're good, but I'm leaving.
They did a great job, there's a lot, I don't know what the total number of participants was.
I'd say the veterans program that we had down here was, um, well-received and went off very well.
The memorial looks very nice.
Yeah, I saw it, it looks really sparkly.
Sparkling clean, you can notice it very well, can't you?
It does pops.
Alright, um, planning board met Wednesday the twelfth. There's a meeting this Wednesday, the nineteenth, to go over zoning ordinances. Um, and we, in the past meeting, and that's, we did a bunch of that as well as had a couple of cases. We also, um, discussed the subdivision procedure, getting participation for Dale. So, um, either the chair or vice chair would participate in Dale's meeting whenever he decides to hold one. And we probably want to have somebody from here, either you or myself, attend that. So, we just need to get a date on that.
Okay.
Uh, facilities committee toward the fire department. And to get an initial assessment of, to consider moving the PD to create a safety complex. So, we just kind of looked that over to see, you know, make sure that there was space and stuff like that. Kind of assess additional needs that the fire department may have in combining, um, that complex or that, the PD and fire department to make a safety complex. I think we're supposed to have the facilities meeting this Wednesday at three forty-five. I didn't see it in the calendar.
I don't think it's made its way on the calendar yet.
Okay.
But the meeting has been posted.
Alright, great, thank you. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. I was able to attend the master planning committee, subcommittee workshop, community workshop that we held. Stephen, you were there, Steve was there. Um, it was lightly attended, I guess, with the word.
Nice way to put that.
Thank you.
Three of the three attendees.
But we made it as productive as we could with the number of people that we had to kind of get some input on where folks felt it was important when it comes to long-term growth for the town, but also conserving resources, uh, in our national, I mean, our natural resources, so. And then we're going to pull that information together to help develop our goals for the master plan. And then we do have a workshop scheduled for tomorrow night at six PM to kind of review, debrief that, but also updating, um, individual chapters. We'll be breaking out into small groups to update the information in the individual chapters.
Yeah, highway, talk to Steve, I've had a few emails that have come in regards certain, um, more over towards the, the lake roads. I think Seaman's Point has kind of dropped off. So he was going to try to put some crews on that, they're just getting ready for any, um, winter weather that might come our way. Looks like we're obviously, with the feeling in the air, we're closer to winter than maybe we are used to. The, uh, if you'll notice, a small excavator is still sitting over at the highway department. So they, the one that we approved, the wheeled one, they took it back to do all the, like, pre-purchase, um, maintenance, all that stuff before they deliver it, so they said keep this one for the next couple of weeks while they do that, and then they'll return it. And I think that was, uh, about it, he's just, they're working on trying to get all these final gradings in, so like they're doing Ledge Farm again and everything before like hard frost sets in. So like major traveled roads and then they kind of work down from there without sending the equipment back and forth across town unnecessarily, but definitely the, oh, and I believe he had an interview on Saturday. Maybe that's, I don't know if it's in your, it's in your notes.
It's in your, uh, non-public packet for hiring.
My line to talk about. So we'll, uh, it sounds like there was an interview with this, so the rest of that later, um, yeah, stay for highway.
Very good. Alan, administrator's report.
Our land use coordinator, Nick Principato, will be departing his position on December first. Uh, he has accepted a full-time position in Nashua. We knew his time here was probably going to be short-lived, we weren't expecting. I'm sorry. Uh, the land use coordinator. But he has landed his full-time position as he's finishing up his final credits at Yonh. Um, so I congratulate him and wish him the best in his new role. The job opening has been posted on the town's website, New Hampshire Municipal Association, and at the general posting locations throughout the town. Um, Catherine Casper reached out, she's a seacoast energy circuit rider. Um, she wanted to discuss some potential options that may be available to the town. And I also just took the opportunity to speak to her about some questions that we might have about our existing solar applications, both here at the fire station, so she might be a very good resource. I've scheduled her on your December first meeting agenda to discuss those opportunities, ways to save money on electricity and explore some available grant support for upgrading municipal vehicles. That's obviously using alternative energy. And then she can also assist with supporting energy and sustainability goals, such as signing up for free energy audits to reduce energy expenses or identifying funding sources for renovations, building upgrades, or HVAC system replacements. So I'll make sure that the, um, facilities committee, the facilities assessment committee is aware of that too, because that might be, as they're, uh, working towards their goals. Bill Lambert from New Hampshire DOT, I was able to pin him down to propose, or to come in and do a presentation on the proposed four-way stop at the intersection of Raymond Road, Ledge Farm Road, and Deerfield Road. Uh, this discussion stems from a road safety audit that was initiated by Owen Friend Gray last year. It didn't come back, um, as a supported intersection for improvements, but recent discussions have brought it back on the table. So now there's potentially an opportunity to make somewhat an improvement at that intersection. So he's on your schedule for December fifteenth. Um, we did receive a signed grant agreement with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the restoring habitat connectivity to benefit at-risk wildlife in New Hampshire project. And that's for the Reservation Road project here in Nottingham. The conceptual design includes installing a ten-foot-by-four-foot dry passage culvert with natural substrate along with fence guide wall structures extending approximately two hundred feet along the identified turtle crossing hotspot. As you may remember, Dallas Huggins from the Conservation Commission presented on the SEFRIT last fall. So, um, we weren't sure, it sounded, we figured we would have heard by now, but they did apologize for the delayed notification, but that project is moving forward. I believe, um, I don't have a copy of the grant application. I believe Conservation may have it in their possession, but there is a lot of in-kind donations that will be coming from the highway department who will be completing the culvert installation.
Is that, it's at the next spring?
Um, I believe that's when it's proposed to take off. On Reservation Road. Nottingham, it's, it's, it's a very small section in Nottingham.
Originates in Deerfield.
You go through Deerfield to get to it. Just a reminder to all, the town offices will be closed next Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth, for the Thanksgiving holiday break. I did speak with the recycling center staff and they are going to remain open on Friday just to take in that extra influx of holiday garbage. So you don't have to hold it over until Saturday. Um, so they will be open during their normal business hours, nine to five, in addition to regularly scheduled Saturday hours. And there were some adjustments made to the two thousand twenty-four financial statements after the auditors wrapped up their fieldwork here on, um, November fourth. We are moving closer towards setting the tax rate, hopefully within the next few days. I spoke with Michelle Clark, who's our Department of Revenue monitor, last week. Uh, we were going through the MS five thirty-five that you had signed at the meeting prior to that, and there were some adjustments that were necessary just because it was submitted based on where they were in status of completing the audit, but because they got so much more wrapped up in those two additional field days, there were some minor amendments that actually increased the balance of our unreserved fund balance, so I'll be forwarding that to you. But outside of that, I think that was like the, the last missing piece that we need to get into that tax rate setting process. So hopefully, like I said, within the next couple of days and then we can get the tax bills printed and mailed out. If you don't think that they will be due sooner than Christmas, it will most definitely be after, so. For action items tonight, uh, the town deliberative session is typically held the Saturday following the close of the candidacy filing period for elected officials. Based on that schedule, it will be held on Saturday, January thirty-first, at nine o'clock. Unless the board would like to propose an alternate date and time, this is a date we will post as the official session. Just wanted to put that out there.
Aren't you reason to have a different?
Well, we could have it during the week if we wanted to. It doesn't have to be on a weekend.
The town deliberatives?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. The school typically has Thurs on Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, I believe at seven PM.
On the fourth, February fourth. So then our public hearing would be the fourteenth of the twenty-first, around that timeframe?
Um, for the budget committee?
Yeah.
We actually do have it set on their proposed calendar. Thursday, January fifteenth. And I am going to have to double-check that with the committee on Thursday because they have both the town and the school scheduled the same night. That's probably not a good idea. I, I think typically we do the town on Tuesday and then the school on Thursday, so I'll verify that with them.
That's usually how it happens. Right?
So.
At one point, we used to do them both on the same night. So, it, it is possible, but.
Maybe if they did it a little bit earlier than seven PM. But I will, um, I'll clarify that with them on Thursday. So, do you have any further discussion on the scheduling of deliberative sessions? Just so I can make sure that we have supervisors and a town moderator and a town clerk and election officials prepared for that date.
Sounds good to me, I'm just thinking, that date sounds fine, I'm just thinking, working backwards is thinking about meetings.
For the timing.
For our, for us, for work, a couple of budget workshops to schedule in there to pencil in for us. And then if we have to cancel them, if we don't need them, but that's just my thought, because the way the holidays fall, it's.
Yeah, anything we would have to do would have to be prior to the town's budget hearing.
Right, and the Monday before is not ideal, because we did that last year.
It wasn't enough time.
No.
And I guess since I've posed the question, I also need to verify with you the location for said deliberative session. We moved it here last year. Um, I have not put in, I would have to put in a request to use the school gymnasium if you would rather have it there for parking constraints.
Man, I thought the deliberative was fine.
Deliberative is probably fine here.
And it's on a Saturday either way, it's not like we're disrupting the school, but I don't feel that we are excessively attended. Nothing real, no real hot topics or anything like that, I think it's just.
The capacity, is the capacity of this gym again?
One sixty-something.
I was gonna say, it's like one sixty-two, one sixty-seven, somewhere thereabouts.
I mean, if, if you can verify the last couple of tendences, but I don't believe that we've exceeded that, we were well within that capacity.
Oh yeah, last year was low.
Right.
We also had inclement weather, too.
Yeah, but I don't expect people to be stronger than this.
What do you, do you think we should consider having it at school?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. Um, I think if we set up a live broadcast like we did in the past, so people can at least watch it, remotely from the comfort of their home, it doesn't give them the voting authority if they're alive in person, but.
So we get closer and identify if there's any hot topics that might warrant moving it. Yeah. We can discuss that at a later date. How late can we schedule that?
It has to be posted, so.
It does, but not.
Right, not yet. I mean, we probably do still have room for discussion at it, at the December first meeting. I just want to make sure that if we have to make reservations for the school, the use of the school, or like I said, if anybody has any planned time away, make sure that we've got enough hands-on deck to conduct a legal deliberative session.
I'm good with keeping it as is so far. Yeah, I'm good.
Whatever. No, oh, no, no, I mean, I don't think we need to do it at the school, but I'm not opposed to having it during the week either, so, you know, on a weeknight.
Do you want me to keep it on for a discussion for a future meeting and then?
Yeah, sure, do I want, yeah, we talked one, some first, but I think the thirty-first sounds good.
But I think it's important for us to let, kind of decide and let other people know when it's going to be, so.
Yeah.
And can it move to February if we wanted to?
I think the later that Wednesday, right?
The following Wednesday, yeah. I think we typically hold it after the candidate period, right? Because the town deliberative.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just don't know if we could move it to February or didn't give us enough time between.
Worst case, we could probably do it Tuesday if the school's gonna do it Wednesday if we wanted to do it during the week.
Couldn't do it that next Saturday. I'm just asking, I'm not saying to do it.
We could do it on a Monday on our regular.
Do it prior to the school.
Right.
Well, that would, the thirty-first would be prior to the school, right? Is the school on?
No, but what I'm saying is like if the, if the school is scheduled for the fourth, I mean, rather than if people come out on multiple nights.
Oh, do it like four o'clock.
Have them do the town portion, you know?
Yeah, but the schooling runs long and sometimes the weirdest stuff on the town just turns into a two-hour debate. And you're like, what are we talking about?
I mean, I think if we.
We don't want to even do a public hearing for the, for the budgets in the same night, I can't imagine doing that deliberately.
When we tried to do a Saturday with both of them in the same day, it was tough because we did the town and then the school was posted. The town went a little bit longer than anticipated and it was, it was difficult because you're trying to post a specific time for the school as well. So that's, I think having them separate days is probably best.
Okay, well, I will bring it back up on the first and we'll figure out if there's any changes. There is, in the signature file, there is a petition submitted by EverSource for a new utility pool on Raymond Road. There's a map included, I'm just requesting a motion to sign that license request.
I have, um, yeah, I can do that. I will make a motion to approve the EverSource, um, application for a pole or basically a replacement pole, I guess. So, anything else I need to say? Right, it's a replacement, yeah.
On second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and, um, Robert DiBerto, who is doing the new subdivision off of Mitchell Road. Um, we did not have a sample template available for a letter, letter of credit for a performance bond. For the past couple of new subdivisions, we've received a surety bond from insurance companies. So, um, he was able to come up with a format from another town here in New Hampshire. I did run it by legal counsel and they were perfectly fine with it. So, that will be the template that he's going to his bank to, um, initiate the performance bond for the remaining work to be completed. Um, he's got it, the subdivision split up into two phases. Phase one is Captain Smith, phase two is Lipazan, which is the cul-de-sac off of the main, um, road within the subdivision. They were doing a fine grade between today and tomorrow, and then it will be base pave tomorrow. So he's actually progressed quite a bit since the last time he came forward. Um, he is at the point of being ready to transfer lots, so it's time for him to post the performance bond. So, um, as soon as we get that letter of credit, I, I'm looking for approval to move forward with a letter of credit as reviewed by legal counsel. And, um, once we get that document back, then I will be presenting it to you.
So we're not approving anything until we get it.
No, you're just, you're approving the format that it's acceptable to his financial institution.
The other town's format.
Correct, and it will just be updated with Nottingham's information.
Right, right, because I was like, what are we doing with this? I'm like, there's pencil markings and.
Yeah, so, so the, um, the cover letter that I included in your packets is just what's remaining to be done on that phase one. So it's the base pave, the fire cistern, it was the fine grade, the base pave, and the fire cistern installation, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with using that format.
Okay.
Should we need to make a motion?
Real motion?
Nope, um, I guess if you wanted to make a motion, I did request one on my report, so.
Yeah, I just don't have one to give you.
Alright, um, you want? Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the format of the, um, surety bond.
Performance.
Performance bond what?
Performance bond.
Performance bond.
Letter of credit?
Letter of credit, thank you.
Good emotion?
Motion, bad motion.
I'll second, the real one will be when we actually accept them.
Right.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on to your correspondence, Sandra Hall, who is present here tonight, uh, regarding her property. At two fifty-five Old Turnpike Road, there was multiple correspondence that's been issued throughout. I know you've received some individually, I've received some other, and town officials have as well, and it's regarding the restoration of her property to its previously approved use as a car dealership and also following up on a change of use that was initiated by a prior tenant. So I'm sure you will be hearing from her later this evening. Um, under general mail and other correspondence, Nottingham Parks and Rec has invited you all to walk in the holiday parade on December sixth. The parade begins at ten o'clock and they are hoping that you will be able to arrive here at the town hall between nine fifteen and nine thirty to carry the banner at the front and center of the parade. So if you could reach out to Bridget and just let her know if you will be able to attend, that would be great. On eleven thirteen, Frank Gonzalez, one thirteen Kelsey Road, requested an appointment for this meeting and that was denied. On eleven-four, the New Hampshire Department of Revenue provided an acknowledgement of their review of the contract that's been presented for assessing services with Avatar Associates for the contract year of two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty. Uh, they did not make any contract recommendations at this time. And also on eleven-four, Comcast notified us of the commencement of the cable franchise renewal process. It's a ten-year contract, it takes a while to negotiate, so they have to notify us that those negotiations are going to be starting very soon. So, um, the letter acknowledges that they will be reaching out to schedule an informal meeting to start those discussions, but our current contract expires in two thousand twenty-eight and additional information will be forthcoming.
Just on the Department of Revenue, uh, the acknowledgement of the contract assessing service, when it says no contract recommendations, do they mean they don't make?
They don't make them. So what we have to do is, once we've executed the contract, we submit it to them and they put it on file if there's any discrepancies or questions at that point.
Okay.
So, um, I did go through the contract, it's pretty standard assessing services. Department of Revenue will actually, they put out a template and it follows all of the, the standards, the ASB standards. If you want, I can put it through a legal review, but as far as like in consideration of the prior five-year contract that the select board signed, it's virtually the same, with the exception of marketable increase in cost of services. We are looking at, we were at about twenty, I think twenty-eight thousand per month. And, I'm sorry, twenty-eight thousand per year for the assessing services and we're just over thirty-five thousand in the new contract. So that will be, I think we amended it when we went through the budget review in the presentation. Um, it's approximately thirty-five thousand a year for the contracted assessing services. That, that is the new one. The current, the current cost is just over twenty-eight thousand. That, that is the new one. The current, the current cost is just over twenty eight thousand.
And that was the only bid we received?
We didn't put it out for bids. So typically, um, we've, we can put it out to bid. One of the recommendations from the financial policies program that I just took recently was not to waste time putting out for audit services or assessing services because they are overwhelmed and there are many that aren't taking on new clients. So if, if you have one that works and you don't have questions.
Need to change.
Don't change. And I did try to put out the audit services two years ago, I mean, to get any response.
I remember that.
That's right, what you were thinking of.
But typically with those types of contracts, we usually try to get them if, go through like one cycle and then hit the next one through an RFP process.
Assessing, we have two items in assessing.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for land use tax change on map sixty nine lot seventeen A.
I'll say it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion for land use tax change bill for the same lot, map sixty nine lot seventeen dash A. Say it.
Motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget review. So I'm assuming everybody hasn't had an opportunity to at least semi-peruse the budget that was sent to us over the weekend.
Yeah.
So just to put it into context, combined, or with the tax cap, just so everybody's kind of targeting a number here as far as what we can't exceed. We, we essentially can't go over more than it's about a hundred thirty, hundred twenty, roughly under twenty nine thousand dollars over last year's appropriations. Minus revenues.
So that brings that total that we can bring in at five million. We have that number?
We'll get back in.
Is it just four percent off this baseline? But you're saying there's less revenue?
Not, so basically our total appropriations last year, including the warrant articles, were six million ninety four thousand seven hundred eighty eight dollars. And then I just used the same net revenues that we had reported to the state at the end of the third quarter. The revised revenues, which was two million eight hundred seventy two thousand three hundred fifty seven dollars.
Check this over for my little brain, two million?
Eight hundred seventy two thousand three hundred fifty seven dollars. So the total amount to be raised by taxes last year is three million two hundred twenty two thousand four hundred thirty one dollars, so a four percent increase on that would be three million three hundred fifty one thousand three hundred twenty eight dollars, twenty four cents. Which would be again about a hundred twenty nine thousand dollar increase last year. Three million three hundred fifty one thousand three hundred twenty eight dollars, twenty four cents to be raised by taxation. So that's when you, when you're just thinking about that overall dollar amount. And you think, I, I was just thinking about what we go over last year combined between the operating budget and then any warrant articles we might be considering. That's what you're looking at. So that being said, we have a lot of cutting to do.
Is there any way to get a bottom line number like that, that's four percent higher? Because like the defaults here, which is pretty close to what you said is
Right.
About two hundred thousand dollars over minus revenues, which is, but it's hard to go back and forth on the revenues. I was just wondering if you had a, if we knew a better number for what we need to make this number.
Well, I think if you go back, you could look at the warrant articles first and say, okay, what are the warrant articles we consider absolutely necessary and required, like, you know, is it, you know, the SCBA and the Police Tech Fund, you know, it's starting with those ones and ignore the larger ones like the road warrant article that we want to consider. So if you're starting with, you know, forty to eighty thousand dollars of warrant articles.
Okay.
And then it might just be creative accounting as far as maybe looking toward the unassigned fund balance to fund some of those so that there isn't the tax impact.
Right. Like we had done last year.
Well, especially if the audit shows a higher unassigned but, fund balance, if we're going much higher than that twelve percent target. We might want to utilize some of that too.
Okay.
There are a couple of equations that were factored into this operating budget that could potentially go out as a separate warrant article. We talked about the proposal for adding two full-time firefighters. It doesn't necessarily have to be there, but because it's been the way that it's been introduced to the town in the past, whether we follow that, so that would make some adjustments in the operating budget from both the salary standpoint and benefits and payroll taxes. And then also in addition to that would be the potential gate attendant positions for the town beach.
Right, but we'd still have to add that total amount. So we can move it out of the operating budget.
We're still gonna have to bring it back in, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not really creative because you're just.
So, I mean, the fat number.
But I still would put it on a warrant article.
People, yeah, no.
Cast the vote, which way to go instead of us just stuffing it in the.
Oh, yeah, I agree that it probably should be a warrant article. It's not gonna change the amount.
No.
Right, no, it's not.
No.
Actually, so this really, yeah, it's mostly shifting money around anyway.
We have a good decision about our health, health insurance. As of right now, we can't change any plans. We would have had to notify Health Trust by the fourteenth. We are open enro, we're January open enrollment, so we have to notify the employees in December. So based on the, the plan options that were out there, it was going to be higher deductible, which we would have then participated in a health NHRA plan. So your cost savings was, usually when you have a higher deductible plan, you end up contributing more to the HRA, so it's virtually no impact.
Yeah.
So for the cost savings, there really wasn't going to be much. That decision was taken out of our hands, actually. Didn't like the other possibilities.
We consider increasing the employee contribution.
Also, I think it's really high deductible.
And you hate to do that, but it is another option.
Yep.
Be more than having my employer tell me that.
You could get the same reaction.
It's a hard pill to swallow.
I just want to start right at the beginning, just see if this, I guess, grays through rather than all of us looking differently. Just to start at the first section, see if there's anything that we feel we can start with.
And just make it, make sure you're paying attention to the two thousand twenty six department request line off the default budget.
Right.
Only thing we could possibly do is reduce the merit compensation. Did we not use any of that this year?
Uh, we did, so it's, it's just reflective in the individual salary lines. So I mean, we could back that out and then plug a figure in there once we figure out what we've got left to work with.
Right, it gets budgeted there, but then it gets expanded from the.
Departments.
Right.
Salary lines.
And I did restore the newsletter to the operating budget.
So do we see anything in the executive totals?
Beyond what you just mentioned.
So do we move on from there?
Yep.
Town clerk totals. See any changes we can make there?
I think that, I mean, the one thing she has in her budget for two thousand twenty six is fifty, fifty five A B for town clerk computer. Can't we purchase that this year? Because she's waiting to budget this year?
So that is included in the, the year-to-date expenditures now.
I see that, yeah.
Her note was not reflective. It showed that there was only a thousand dollars. That's why I think she's already.
I mean, does she need that equipment line? I mean, uh, line number twenty nine, right? It's five hundred dollars there, but there was nothing. If we're, if it's in the equipment maintenance supply, so kind of double.
Yeah, what, what was in her equipment? Um, trying to remember.
She didn't provide an explanation. I can go back through the minutes and see.
And also the mileage is like, are they planning on spending more the rest of this year? I mean, not, not that it's big bucks, but if we could save fifty bucks there.
I think it depends on where their, um, their conference is held.
We can just question that one, maybe five hundred there. For elections, there's not a whole lot we can.
No, because you have three of those for the one.
Okay, of course, there's more elections next year than this year.
But the three.
Just like looking at the line though, that line thirty seven training, we were much higher at twenty seven. We don't think there'll be with the new equipment coming in. We don't need to put any extra in there. She's only showing two hundred. Twenty five was twenty seven hundred, but the new equipment's coming in.
I think the training of that is all included in the
The.
Purchase and the support.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not surprised, I don't know. That's pretty much it.
Finance.
The auditors line, do we expect anything else going out there? Is that our, the auditors that are just finishing, line forty seven?
Yeah, they still have to do the, um, the final installment billing based on the wrap up.
We do that every year?
We do.
So seventeen fives in that group.
Because we're not contracted, we're not.
At use.
Yeah. So I did put in the modest increase just based on what other contract contractual services were going up. Typically, they're between three and five percent, some are higher.
Good.
One forty nine, one four thirty seven fifty. Yes. It's been extended.
Back to the auditors for a minute, you know, we did for twenty twenty four?
How much we expended?
Yeah.
Uh, seventeen thousand seventy five dollars.
All right.
Not a whole lot of them there. I mean, and this line item is only two percent increase, right? I mean, the election one went up a lot, but we see that, so, but I don't think there's much we can do there.
Um, Charlotte, to your point on line forty nine, I did reduce the the budget committee secretary. So that's just a minutes transcription from our remote minutes taker. It really depends on how long the meetings run and how long it takes to transcribe. We could probably reduce that a little bit further just based on year-to-date actuals and how many budget many meetings, I mean, they started in
Early.
Early September.
Is there a? Trying to, whatever, but is there like an AI transcript?
Yeah, we can, we can eventually get to that point. It's just a matter of.
Obviously, the, the audio is coming out and you would think that, you know, I mean, it's almost essentially closed captioning, but printing it on paper.
Microsoft teams will do it for you. Uh, it's just a matter of figuring it out, how to do it for our internal meetings. So.
I mean, a bunch of these are already audio or video recorded. You would think that something could try.
Yes.
I'm just asking if there's some way we can try to eventually save someone. There's usually a cost for that too. I don't know, if it's free, but then somebody's still gonna have to go through and make sure that.
The teams, teams we already pay for.
Yeah, it's part of the subscription.
It's part of our subscription, so.
The, the largest part of that is, your, your minutes shouldn't be like an official transcript of verbatim conversations. It's supposed to be just, you know, the, the basic discussion and any motions made and sometimes there's, it's difficult to distinguish that when you have multiple people that talk over each other or back to back.
We have to figure out how to do it, try it.
Smart AI to meet your.
Yeah. Tell it to only make three pages or something. High level, one-page summary.
And then you have certain committees, like the budget committee and the CIP committee, that like a lot of detail in their minutes, so. It's customizing it to.
Okay, which you still have to point somebody to do. Could be, I don't know.
Line fifty for postage for finance.
But that's, um. That one isn't.
That's sending out the tax bills, which we still have the second half to mail out. Sign up for e-bills.
Let's make sure we get it in this year's budget.
You can pre-stamp all the envelopes. So then, looking at line seventy. Is that the reevaluation? That we just talked about, like the.
No, no, so this is the, the five-year, this is when they summarize all the cyclical inspections that they do the four years prior and bring all the values back in line with market values. So that project costs approximately a hundred and five thousand, and typically what the town has done is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see the new, line sixty-eight is what you were just talking about.
Yes.
That was twenty-eight, now is thirty-five.
Correct.
That's correct there.
Yep, but line seventy is going away, it will be.
But it's going to.
The warrant article. Cause we can only add to capital reserve funds and expendable trust fund via warrant article. In this case, we were just.
Sixty-eight, you're saying is going to.
No, seventy.
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 Thank you. So what do you expect for a warrant article for seventy?
So typically, in the past, every year is a twenty thousand dollar warrant article to raise.
Yep.
And then in two thousand twenty-four, um, it failed.
Right.
So we put it in the budget for last year to raise the funds so we could pay for, for this year.
Right.
So realistically, if we're, if we're trending and we're adding to that capital reserve fund for the next revale to take place in. Um, twenty thirty, then we should probably start thinking about increasing that to at least twenty-five.
Right, cause we're behind a year.
Didn't you say it's gonna be thirty-five a year?
That's just for the general assessing services, so that's just for.
Not the five.
Our contract assessor to come in once a month. Exemptions, credits, review, just everything the.
But the twenty-five, I mean, that might be a good one from the unassigned fund now, it's if there's, it's a small enough one, but it keeps it off.
Still obligated.
Right, we're still obligated, you know, it's like.
So do we think there's any possibility that the health and dental could be lower than what you have in there?
By even fifty?
Do we think that the.
Line seventy-four.
The health and dental, I know, I saw your calculation, the spreadsheet, but do we think there's any possibility that could be lower? Six hundred thousand.
If we are not fully staffed for portion of the year. The only other way to reduce that would be to increase the employee contribution.
Um, what's the, in the, the note, the two percentages?
Are we still on line seventy-four?
Yes, please, uh, nine point two slash fifteen.
Okay, so we have, um, we offer two plans, one of them is a one thousand dollar deductible, it's a higher premium that the employee pays. Um, that one, that plan itself had a nine point two percent increase.
Okay.
For the twenty twenty-six rates, and then the higher deductible, three thousand dollar deductible plan was actually going up fifteen point eight percent. So.
Excellent.
Based on our census data, it averages out to be about a ten point one percent increase overall.
Oh, on how the employees are.
Correct.
Positioned for it. The high deductible plan would pop, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
It was more for the high deductible than it was for the.
Right.
Did you show us the twenty-eight employees?
Yes, twenty-eight full-time eligible, benefit-eligible employees.
To do in there.
I can't taste much of that.
Line eighty-six, do we need to make that accurate? Between eighty-five and eighty-six that it averages out that they cover each other?
Um, eighty-five, one vacant for the period between Alana leaving the position and Nick coming on board. The planner did pick up some additional responsibilities in that time, so. Um, and then we were also, up through June thirtieth, we weren't an S, SRPC dues-paying member, so we paid a. A higher rate for his contracted service.
And eighty-seven is offsetting, right, that's just a placekeeper.
For the postage, correct.
Should we expect his salary to be lower, seeing now we are dues-paying?
Well, no, because there was, there was an hourly rate increase that took effect July first, we just absorbed.
So we can't really lower that figure?
No.
Okay. Except do him away and make John do it. We need Nick back.
Is the same thing for advertising?
Yes.
Ninety-two is offsetting.
Yep, your postage, your advertising, um, some planning and legal ser- legal services are reimbursable, sometimes. The board needs to consult on specific matters that can't be billed to the applicant, um. Yes, those three, and, um. Actually, registered deeds is zeroed out now, because we, we have the applicant take the plans track to the registry and they pay for the recording fees.
Nothing there, nothing zoning. See, that's all offsetting.
So this, this is picky, but what was line one oh eight? Expenditure of three fifty-two, thirty-five, what is that?
Um, I think it's just in the wrong spot.
Yeah, cause it's salary.
Yeah. I think it supplies.
Oh, so it should go really into one oh nine?
Yes.
Gotcha. Pretty sure, which keep doing one.
Yeah, no, that was good, that, that supplies went down quite a bit.
Yeah.
What's line one sixteen?
New fire station building, so it's the existing fire station.
But why is it, what was the?
Um, they had some issues with the, the garage doors, um, multiple issues.
Okay.
That required repair, and then there was, um, the new washer and dryer that was added to the mezzanine.
Okay. But, I mean, do we wanna be at five or at fifteen hundred? Cause we've, we've moved that number before, and do we have room that we've taken and paid for that out of the building maintenance? Fund? Not that we, we need to, if we have extra in this year, we don't, we don't need to, we have the fund where it is, but I'm just. We have a thirty-five hundred dollar difference from what is showing. So I'm just asking, I don't know.
I think the only reason I, I increased it was just because, you know, with the. Age of the building, we are starting to see some.
Yep.
Wear and tear, some more costly.
Good thing we have a facilities committee.
So, I mean, there's, it's really just trim that needs to get done.
We do have to mention, when we were over there the other day, there were two Awuga items, and I don't know if we can cover this year or not, but one is the fascia. Up at the top where snow actually comes in, so that really needs to be.
On what building?
Done, the fire station, the new fire station, it's, it's just a matter of reattaching it, but it's up high.
Facial mortis.
Told us that he'd been asked to do it, but hadn't gotten around to it, so, and the gutters.
The gutters, right, the gutters need to be cleaned at a minimum.
There, that's, if those break down, that's a big problem, and.
Cause there's stuff actually growing in them.
And there's damming that then freezes, uh, uh, an Egress door. Often they can't use because it's frozen from the gutters overflowing, so and that's on the left-hand side as you're facing the building.
I'm gonna have to look at that, because I believe when Alan Trant was the facilities manager, I'm almost positive he had a company that came in that was supposed to do that.
Well, then there's been a lot of.
Right, this pine tree that I've got, we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, we can see stuff growing.
You can see the fascia, it's in the front.
We, we know about the fascia, we've already asked for that repair, and we're just waiting on the individual.
Right, so that one, but the, the gutters definitely need to be cleaned, are the gutters on both sides?
You know, I didn't notice when we were over on the other side.
I didn't look.
But that, but that one side is actually affecting bad entrance, where they can't use it.
Right, because there's a door there.
And it's, yeah, it's deteriorating.
Right, the ice, well, it, it pools and becomes ice, so.
That's what we learned.
Yeah.
So those are, I don't know if those are things that can be, if we have anything to do that, to get that done.
Well, that, the gutters should definitely be cleaned before the snow flies.
Yeah, well, social professional.
Yeah, we have snows flying in there.
Yeah. Crazy. Well, library building maintenance, one nineteen. They asked for that.
No.
No?
Nope, so, um, they took care of their general maintenance item, so.
Okay.
Um, ours covers their pest control and then minor repairs.
Could that come down a thousand bucks?
Cause we cover like their air conditioning and stuff like that too, so.
The big things.
The big things, they cover the little things.
Were they planning on that?
No, that was not in the request, that's just, um, something that's carrying forward.
Do we have a quote for the library?
For what specifically? For the air conditioning, no, we have to pull together an RFP for it.
But that was a relatively, that wasn't an H in one like here, though, right, it just needed to be fixed. I'm just wondering if we leave that line item there, so that we have.
It's not gonna cover the air conditioner.
Yeah, the air conditioner would come out of the expendable trust fund, we did get preliminary quotes for. The, the part of the system that's down right now, we fixed the furnace.
Yeah.
We held off on the air conditioning until we can address that with this building, but that was significant, that was. Preliminary estimates were like twenty thousand dollars.
Excellent, not covered here.
Yes, so this, so the general maintenance line items within the operating budget cover the things like the pest control. Alarm and security coverage, um. Anything minor that we can really squeeze in there.
So we could reduce that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's peanuts, but.
If you take one or two thousand off from there.
When will we have a balance for what is left right now in the maintenance and repair?
Um, I have to get together with Betsy and find out what she has. Requested from the trustees and what's still outstanding to request from them.
Okay, any chance we could have that for our next meeting?
Yes.
Cause it would probably make more sense, I think, to kind of dwindle these down and put. More money into that fund, so we could use it wherever it's needed. Now, keep these at a minimum of what specific maintenance.
Anything that wouldn't fall under the, um. Yeah, cause the expendable trust fund is, is worded so that it's, it's not like. General building maintenance, like painting or whatever, it would be like your major systems, your electrical, your plumbing, your HVAC. Operational type repairs.
So like cleaning the gutters of the fire station and.
Right, that would be more of a maintenance item for here.
Okay.
For this budget.
And it's still like six hundred dollars left in the fire department building. No, it's not a lot, but it's something.
We have the electric, the new fire station, huh, one twenty-one?
Yes, so that came into question when we reviewed this last time, um, the revision solar. Their billing, for whatever reason, it was never broken down between the two systems, between the community center and the fire station, now it is. So prior to this year, the community center electric account was absorbing the. Charges for both buildings, and now it's more accurately reflecting amongst both, so.
Which is why one's under.
One is under and one is over, correct.
So tech mini center, one thirty-nine is just included in one forty, can we just get rid of one or consolidate it? Do you have to keep a line item though?
Which one, Matt?
One thirty-nine is included in one forty, so it's just a zero line.
Yeah.
There's some, like, I don't know what.
I think we consolidated it last, last year or two years ago, it's just a matter of cleaning it up on the worksheet.
So what would our electric bills be without the solar?
I don't, I don't know if we have a really great contract with this solar company, are we getting much of a credit for our solar output? I feel like if they're getting the solar, they're charging us for electricity.
Well, I think most of it's to offset the, uh, install price, probably.
I think we're at that point where.
I think coming this year might offset.
Right.
We'll start seeing savings, maybe, just in time to replace some of the, um, panels.
The woman that's coming in our next meeting should be able to maybe give us some.
Yeah, I provided her, I provided her with our, um. Agreement with revision.
Okay.
Maybe she'll be able to touch on it and shed some light on it.
Insurance, not a whole lot we can do there.
Does the cemeteries have a line item, or is it just a, like, is there any breakdown, or is it just high at the top or something?
I thought they had a single line, but that, it only shows in the total now.
Yeah, one forty-two and then one forty-three, okay.
Is that for mowing or?
Yes. Mowing and any, um, tree branch, limb. Mowing and any um tree branch limb removal that needs to take place by contracted companies, just because of location. Or proximity to. The graves.
Can I come out of perpetual care?
It does, but.
Just for specific.
As much as available. Um the perpetual care, I think it's only the, if I remember correctly, I think it's only the interest that's earned on those perpetual care accounts that can be used.
Right.
So when you're talking contracted mowing services.
Don't need so much. So the mowing we can't handle, but like the tree stuff we have.
The highway department does as much as they can, but sometimes.
Alright.
It's, it's beyond their liability limits.
Well, the time constraint too.
Yeah, I mean.
This doesn't cover any paving.
Had that apple tree at the ground that's been down for.
Some issue about paving the cemeteries, the cemetery.
There was a, there's a request on the CIP that's in there as a placeholder.
That's where I saw it, thanks.
So then. Regional planning, the one hiding in there, why is?
So that's technically where the SRPC dues belongs in um if you go off the Department of Revenue's chart of accounts. But the planning board decided to incorporate it into their budget request for this year.
Okay.
I don't think it mattered where it went.
It really doesn't.
Just that they wanted to make sure it got included.
Uh police. I know. She wants the part timer, but like, does that something you can consider?
Cause that's the recommendation of staff.
Yeah, it's currently not filled.
Right, well, because.
And they were getting by with them.
Part timer became full time.
Yeah, Sam was a part timer.
Right, but we, so basically.
I think it's one or the other, you either have a part timer. Or you have a full-time overtime. Right. It's. It's how we've, even in the fire department, the highway, like, you're either gonna pay it in line one forty-eight or one forty-nine, but you can maybe. Contract one a little bit if you want. Cause she's covering that part-time position with full-time overtime, which is probably more expensive than.
Did we lose anybody?
No, we've been pretty stable.
Duty rotations, kinda like why they need more firefighters, cause six doesn't cover eight.
Right, but we basically. Should have increased, technically increased staff by. A full-time, a part-time going to full-time.
Off from what her staffing is, and I don't know exactly what rotation they work.
Were down to full-time? I guess that was the question. Was the question I was having, were we down?
So now they're fully staffed at full-time.
So.
And she'd like to have a part-time, but we haven't.
Okay, so we were down to full-time and that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I know you are. So the one thing I was looking at is the line one sixty-four, the, the cruiser. Since. If we need be, we can talk to her with the status, so I think somewhere in, I read in the notes that she's looking to replace a twenty-one. Uh cruiser. I don't know which one that is, is it one of the marked ones or the unmarked one? Do we know? But possibly where we just put. One cruiser on late last year and now two cruisers are just coming online, we have three. Essentially brand-new cruisers, very late into the game and if that one's of a. You know, not a maintenance headache or something like that, it could just be enough of an overflow that we potentially skip one year. Potentially.
Right.
But that's a forty-seven thousand dollar line item. Cause I don't even know if the third cruiser's been put in service yet, if it finally came back from.
Um considering I have the SUV over the old fire station ready to be. De-badged and.
The, the one that we took out of service?
I'm pretty sure the other two are.
I haven't talked, but still, we're, we're in November and we're just putting the final one in, so I mean, it's brand, we, we got.
Yeah.
The two trucks. And the other one in, and then the unmarked one are all of good shape, so we could. I would.
Yeah, I mean.
Essentially what you're saying though is you take that forty-seven thousand dollars away and you're most likely increasing your maintenance budget, potentially.
Potentially.
Right, potentially. Just taking that risk.
Yeah, I'd like to.
But I don't know.
I would like to know a little bit more about that cruiser. Before we kind of make that decision.
The two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah.
So get a full list of year and makes of the cruises that we currently have.
Right, how?
Yeah, I wasn't saying jump on it.
No, no, it's, it's a good thing that.
Big chunk of money.
And it might be something that we leave in the budget and kind of hold off purchasing till. Like, as.
We're cutting onesie twosies, we need to cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars off this line item, so it might have to go. I'm just saying, like.
Right, no, I know.
The other three cruisers that are brand-new might take up the brunt of the work and when one goes down, you drive the blue one. Or whatever, which one it is occasionally to keep it moving, but. And I'm not saying I wanted to, but we, we got into a misfortune when we had to replace two this year, but because of that. Might not need to purchase another one next year.
I know how hard Fawn has fought to have this rotation and we cover a huge territory, but yeah, it's like, where are we gonna cut? It, it sounds like something to consider, but.
Well, yeah, definitely.
Like to do some digging and figure out. Cause I remember last year when we were getting. The, the one that's over in the old fire station has had its service equipment removed. Correct? So it's not even like we could kind of drag that one on for an extra year. But the one before that was like a maintenance headache and they were like, you don't want this car. So, but she said everything else is running pretty good, so if we get through and she's like, eh, this one's fine.
That was a COVID car.
Yeah, it was. So that, that's the only aha thing I had, the rest of her stuff was onesie twosie stuff and then we can. If she can come up with maybe a budget proposal, we can talk to her, if she sees like one or the other, if we got part-time, we could reduce the. Got a part timer at that twenty, but we could reduce our full-time overtime down ten thousand to twenty, that would be another nice. Cause i- if not, I see her full-time overtime is up, but we're fifteen grand short on the part-time salary line, so one of these. Seems like we could take ten grand out of one of those lines. To, to meet the need of the department without really.
And she hasn't been able to find a part timer. No, that's always the question too, is no matter what you prove or don't, can you get the personnel?
Well, at that point, she can again shuffle it back and forth, but still there's. I don't think the total would be the same though. I think you'd still save. Potentially, if you look at the total, we had a year-to-date with all those, those three lines, the part-time, full-time and overtime. Yeah. I think if you eliminated the full-time potentially, the total I don't, I think would still be less. We have much else to talk about on police?
I don't.
I mean, I think we'd get some feedback from Fawn on those, Chief. I know she's not gonna be happy about either one now. She's probably watching right now.
They work hard and.
Uh, it's a fire. So for the potential that the two other. Members here. One, we would talk about moving them to the award article.
Right.
But to potentially, one of the members might be like. Like EMT base or something that we could pay for him under the ambulance revolving fund. But. So then that, that number would go down, we would, we would move part of it over, but then how would that look as a warrant article would say? Two employees, I'm doing rough math here, we're just saying. Add two additional employees of two hundred thousand dollars, approximately a hundred thousand to be funded by the. Capital reserve fund and a hundred thousand to be raised by taxation, this amount would be blah, 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 blah. Is that roughly how you would think it would read?
That's only if he was to pursue one of those full-time positions being strictly EMT, not firefighter certified. You wouldn't be able to. It would have to be for the ambulance operation, it has to be specific too.
I'm struggling with so many unknowns on this too, it, it seems like putting the cart before the horse to not have. More time in administration before putting on. Two extra firefighters, we're down a firefighter now, so it'd actually mean adding three firefighters. I think Chief Curry is more optimistic about finding that than I am, and I certainly defer to him, but.
Well, he can't hire above that, so like he hires one, start to get him on and one might leave if he can actually. Have three positions open to get him in, right, but if we're telling him his line is six, he can't. He can't be hiring a seventh person, be like, I'm pretty sure he's gonna leave tomorrow, so you know.
We're down one. Five. And um not a lot of administrative time.
Right.
Which I don't think is a good situation.
The um, the gear line, the protective gear one eighty-four. Have we updated most of our stuff to that new PFA? I know we've been.
He's, he's working that way, um I think he said it was at the budget committee last week, I think he said it was like seventy-five hundred dollars to outfit. Every employee, so.
He said it in our meeting too.
New CIP meeting.
No, in our meeting here.
Year two, yeah.
Which I think that sounded right, I, I just wrote it in the minutes to.
Oh, the meetings are blending together now.
Probably hence why he's got that figure in for.
I'm just wondering, Chris, did we?
Yes, for two, correct.
Metal outfit. But. Do you think we have enough margin this year being down that we could potentially purchase? Next year's gear, this year and take fifteen grand off of next year? We seem to be always down firefighters, but I'm just asking.
The gear is quite specific. Yeah, very specific to the individual.
They're all measured.
I don't know if we were down any of that, it's like you're waiting on these two people that, you know what I mean, like? The chain of command's been down and our full-timers are good, but we have other people that are waiting new year. He's got a brand-new set now. Does everybody? No, I said he's got almost a brand-new set now for the firefighter, they just laughed.
But I think it's going to work with the, the new one that's coming on.
He's, he tries to reuse things, but they're so specific that.
Yeah, no, uh the fire brigade training, it might work, there would be definitely, it used to be all generic fit and. If you get to the boots that fit myself, it was usually a size like fifty waist and I was not a fifty waist when I was twenty-two. It's a little roomy, so it's definitely, I understand.
Um line one ninety-one. Certainly hope for.
We're not really sure and he wasn't sure why the increase was there with a question mark. Again, you know, they're using the wax card for fuel at the pumps. The ambulance is built through the ambulance revolving fund, so this is strictly for. The engines and the tanker.
So the ambulances have their own card?
Right.
I don't see why we couldn't put that back down to five, like even if we had a hundred calls between now and the end of the year, we're not gonna. Use up a thousand dollars worth of fuel. At least.
Let's take two off of it.
Yeah, I mean, they're coming down, the price is, well, has been coming down.
Oh, if you compromise, bring it to forty-five.
True.
Did you read my mind?
That's a scary day.
Yeah, I don't wanna hear that.
Vehicle maintenance, I mean, that's always hit or miss on what we need, like. That, that doesn't um. Where do, where do fire hoses come out of? When like they do our.
They would come out of new equipment.
I don't know if it was the one of supplies and equipment, I don't know which one it is. We pressure test a bunch of the hoses like every couple of years and we usually lose one or two, I just don't know where they come out of.
There'd be one ninety-three.
Two hundred.
Probably cause. One ninety-three probably makes sense, cause that one's actually up and we had to replace quite a bit of hoses here.
So, so yeah, so two, line two hundred for forest fire, might be the forestry hoses.
Yeah.
Good.
We need to, they need some of those.
Any reason why we needed to go to twenty-five hundred? Did he ask for it to be twenty-five? Cause we're at two and he hasn't spent any.
Um, the forest fire is completely separate, um the forest fire is, that was that PPE grant that he did get, so. The matching portion, this will be a fully expended line, it's just sitting in a grant line that you're not seeing, so it just needs to be moved over to here.
Do you know if that's where his forestry hoses are hiding?
I don't believe it is.
Okay.
Um yes, actually it is, okay, I found the notes, um forest fire line should be increased by five hundred, it's max now and the fire hoses need replacement. A hose is about two sixty to two hundred and eighty, a length.
So leave that line, that's.
He told us that the facilities committee, another meeting.
Alright, telephone, nothing, radio maintenance, what about that line?
Um that is to replace the base station.
Yeah.
Um he's going to need all of that this year to get it contracted and then potentially fund the second half of it in twenty-six.
Okay. And one ninety-three, just kind of level fund that, cause that's probably. So I guess maintenance, if we could, you know, make it thirteen, that's all really dependent, do you know what, hit us big on fire truck vehicle maintenance here? Or is that standard, just oil changes tires?
Few times.
What's that?
It's like, I think we replaced some springs too.
We did that on the F five fifteen two years ago.
We had a couple fire trucks going.
Good.
It's the battery in the boat.
But maybe. Oh, jeez. Maybe thirteen there? Thinking about big numbers is going back to the salary lines. Okay. Just thinking about realistically what we wanna plan for for next year. Cause that's, that's like a hundred twenty thousand dollars right there. Yeah, right, I just don't know. We're, we're eating it up in part-time.
Right.
But again, not fully.
Between part-time and overtime.
Do we wanna like? If you add all, all those lines up, it's still a hundred fifteen thousand dollars more. Than two thousand twenty-five approved.
Than two thousand twenty-five approved, then if you take out the thirty thousand dollars for. Overtime, which it wouldn't be, you'd have something in there for overtime, that's eighty thousand dollars more.
Do we do? So I agree with her, I was curious about this, I, I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief, but it's like. If we struggle to maintain six, what's the point of even saying eight?
Yeah.
Because it's just a number he could hire to, I mean, do we wanna try to increase along just to seven for one year, do a step increase for two years?
I think that's more realistic to consider for the budget, I know for the fire department, it probably makes more sense to keep it fully staffed.
I know he wants to keep it fully staffed, but again, it comes to realism, but if, at least. If he can get, if we're, if we say you can staff to seven, then he's always trying to get that additional person here, I think for like. Thirty-two minutes, we had seven firefighters one year, so. If we maybe look to go to seven, it might, I mean, I don't know if you still think that's warrant article ask, or is it just to fit the schedule that they have and it's just a budget line item?
It's to fit their schedule, and I think he feels morale would be better as well.
They need the two to make.
The twenty-four seven.
There will be some overlap, yeah.
Right, right, and I think that's a big part.
It'll be like a twelve hour shift where you overlap, where you actually have three.
Just one.
And it would rotate.
Correct, but that's to go with staffing a hundred percent our staff with the schedule they're working. Right now, they're working the schedule, but they're covering with overtime. If, if we allow him to move staffing to seven.
We're not, we're having gaps too, we're, we're not having.
Right, we're not staffing on weekends, are we?
He told us that. That he was staffing.
We are, but, but there's times when it's not.
No, he, he told us that they were staffing all the time.
Yeah.
Even though they were down.
Nobody's there, I'm just saying that it's not, with your full-time employees, it's with your.
Yeah.
Part-time, you volunteers, they're not volunteers anymore.
There's definitely driving by, there's cars there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, um, and you're talking about retention, which is such a crucial thing, and again, I'm really thinking that there needs to be more admin time. More chief time there, um. And, you know, I think he's thinking just retention would be having more bodies there, but. I mean, both would be great, but it's not gonna happen with the four percent tax cap, right, so.
So I just think.
Maybe try for one, but I just don't think eight is realistic and I don't think we can get them.
I mean, he's getting more applicants now than he was a year ago.
Yeah. I mean, he, he was optimistic, but given the fact that we're down right now, we're not even staffed to six.
We only have five.
I, I, I wanna be optimistic with him. But, I don't know.
So do we, trying to.
I'm gonna wrap this up.
Do we try to staff seven at a lower rate, or do we just try to increase the budget line to pay who we have? More, so they stay, and then next year, we maybe increase one. You know what I mean, like right now, we're like, hey, we'll, but then what happens is we lose people to other towns with higher pay. So if we were to at least get people to stay.
Part of that. Loss is because we don't have the shift right. That's my understanding is we, our shifting is not correct, and if we can staff with eight people with a twenty-four. Seven, we're more likely to be like the other towns having that, a regular shift.
Okay.
But I still think the bottom line is money.
Well, yes.
I think if a, if a young person is, is going to another town, it's not just cause I can be with my people.
Scale isn't that much different than the other towns.
We always live for less money, don't we?
What we lack is excitement. Young kids want to go with this more action.
They wanna go where there's more fires?
More fires, more bigger accidents there, a little bit of adrenaline, junkies and.
Yeah, but I think they're leaving for like six dollars an hour more, that's not chump change when you're at twenty-one, thirty hours.
I don't think you're right.
I thought that was one of the ones that was going to Northampton was. We can't compete with Northampton.
So could, could you reach out to Matt and see what that number would be if we dropped it to seven?
Seven.
I think our bigger problem is we need to.
Start more fires?
We need at least a part-time fire chief.
Yeah, yeah, that's really what I would push for, I, I would like it all, but.
Yeah, I just don't see having more administration for people that are sitting around.
Well, I wouldn't want them sitting around, I'd want them to be working, part-time.
The firefighters are sitting around because they're not busy, they're, they're doing like the tasks, right?
I know.
Equipment checks, so you get two people doing stuff, so now you have to have another person staring at them, watching it.
Why couldn't he be doing the? I think it's administrative stuff that they could be doing.
Yeah.
Somebody could be doing.
Potentially, but there is a, and.
Culture too.
We, we get, we got an issue.
And then you're gonna talk about also having to have more rooms, you know, on that mezzanine.
Well, you'd never have more than a couple people there, so.
Oh, he lost two more rooms.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily.
Part of this.
Part of it, that is not needed for this. That's more of a.
Down the road.
Down the road and would make sense if there's work to be done in that building.
Yes, and the fire, um, sprinklers too.
Well, that most likely would have to happen because putting on an addition, you have to go sprinkler.
Wrap it all into that project.
Right.
That, yeah, sounds like something that.
Right, 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 because it's all would be one building and you'd have to do, you'd have to consider. It being an addition and the things that need to happen.
Bring up current standards.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to talk to him again about it and, and see what he thinks, I mean. He's, he's thought about this a lot and I defer to him, I mean, what do I know compared to him, but. I, I'm just not optimistic with the turnover that we've had.
So we're gonna try to change line one seventy-two based on looking at seven instead of eight.
So if we take a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase and divide it by two, that should give us a pretty good estimate.
But then, how would he change the other numbers?
It was.
Well, the other numbers would be. Are you talking about the payroll taxes and the benefits, or are you talking about the gear?
Part-time salary.
If he wasn't expecting two people, like could the gear line go down to a lower number?
So how it'll impact the overtime and the part-time.
And benefits, right?
Cause then the stipend went up into that part-time, which is why it's so much higher.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's just a shift.
So you're talking about fifty-five thousand dollars? Seven thousand five hundred.
That'd be half.
I know, I just wanted to see what the number was when I read it, I think. So what do you think? What do you think the part-time fire chief would need for a pay? If you were to, um, but if we just, I'm saying if we took fifty-seven thousand, you put thirty thousand to the other line, maybe fifty thousand is a part-time chief salary pay. If, if they, if they count as part of our. Right. Contingent.
Right.
Then you're doing, I'm just asking. Take that fifty-seven, swish it a little bit over here.
Probably looking at sixty-five, seventy-five thousand for a part-time, be over a hundred for a full-time.
I don't think we need a full-time.
No, I don't either.
I'm questioning the part-time and how part the part-time has to be. Give them duties, maybe do a few other things here or there. I mean, our chief is doing that.
He is.
He's doing plenty.
So, I'm just, but you're mentioning one thing or the other, but you know, and. Him being conveniently in town, like he's not gonna either wanna do this forever.
Ain't gonna cut it on a four percent tax cap though. Well, I think you just have to be creative and say, okay, do you reduce that full-time, part-time salary? Take the chief's salary, current twenty-four thousand dollars and.
That's the line, yeah, that's what I was saying, we, we cut fifty-seven off, but you put some of that down there if you're doing part-time and by the time this thing ever got around that. Hat, it might be half a year's worth of salary in that line item, if not more.
It's a conversation we need to have with Matt and see.
Yeah.
No, that's why I said that.
See how, yeah.
What we're doing, I mean, definitely.
Yeah.
The seven.
Doesn't help us tonight to cut, we're looking to cut, but.
The, uh. The look to just go to seven might be, I think, a good step increase and they should have a plan. To do it again, further, it's more of a tangible fight.
Yeah, it would be nice to be, that's for sure.
I'm business inspector. And emergency management, I know the, they added the A E D to that line item for emergency management equipment.
Do you guys for that, do you suppose?
I hope so.
The A E D, but they're.
There was something I thought in minutes that I read, she.
So we can get them through state bid pricing, so it'll be reduced cost there, and then there's when we get the, um. The local emergency operations plan completed and updated, that will open us up to additional grant funding eligibility, so.
What do we need on that?
I mean, we're not talking a huge amount of money.
What, to update it?
Yeah.
We have to go through the process, we're starting in January, it's gonna require a couple of, um, meetings updating the plan in kind. Donation through staff and volunteer time to update the plan. So we should have it wrapped up, I think, um. Late February and then probably accepting the, the, a month or two later.
Interestingly, I guess the pads on those have to be changed every year. And they're testing them, and every time they test them, it uses some of the battery, so they've been told not to test them. Too often. And also interestingly, the fire department buys an A E D for particularly State Park.
You would think that the state would buy that. You would think that the state would buy that one.
I would think that. I mean, that's over two thousand bucks and testing.
I can understand them having it. With their duty stuff when they're on, when they do the duty.
Yeah, I, I question that.
I can't imagine them leaving it there.
And they have to test it every year and replace the pads as necessary.
That should come out of the state park, should take that back.
Anyway, they're dipping it up more easily and. I don't think either the fire department or the police really has an appetite for that fight.
Alan?
I think there's plenty of opportunity. The state passes enough down to the local, there's a reason why we can't start kicking back.
Yeah, yeah, I was. And again, if they're responding to a medical emergency, yeah, you know, you guys, but.
Right.
I can't see just gifting the one.
They have it on their vehicles, yeah, that makes sense, but. To have this one housed, to have one sitting there, doesn't make sense.
To have the toll booth that's down at the beach. Do you know where it is?
I don't actually, no, I, I realized I didn't ask, he, he didn't tell us, did he?
No, I had no idea.
Actually, the fire department looked really good, I thought. But he gave us a few nuggets like that. Interesting.
On the highway?
Two, two forty, the telephone was way up this year. But the request is back for eighteen hundred.
Cause he just requested level funding.
Yeah.
Again, there's hope.
But why was it?
Oh, once we renegotiate, once we get them consolidated, there will be a reduction.
Yeah, so what, so why was the phone so high, or is it? I mean, it should, that's included with the internet.
It's the phone and the internet.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so just actual usage, I think it's probably going like. We put an arbitrary number here, but I think it's whatever. So I know we did like level funding requests here, but there's just, you know, we've cut back on fuel before, which we are still way under. Hopefully, for any. Pending storms or anything like that. Our part-time is non-existent, right, there's a ten thousand dollar gap.
Correct, it's been vacant, he hasn't been able to fill the position, we filled it temporarily and then we moved that person to a full-time slot, so.
And then.
I think you can probably reduce the fuel.
I feel like we can reduce it as whole.
By like ten thousand.
Budget by fifty thousand dollars and. It's a hundred thousand dollars under right now. Ninety thousand under, excuse my.
But that's, but that's quarter.
So, and a lot of that depends on.
Winter weather.
Yeah.
What happens in December.
Right, storm isn't forty thousand dollars, a storm is like ten thousand dollars, I'm just. Wondering what can we shave back on here, you know? Cut the fuel down to forty thousand, you know, but if we try to make it real, realistic numbers, but instead of doing level, if our uniforms are really costing us seventy. You know, eight thousand dollars a year we're budgeting for, let's just make the lines look right.
Right, I, I agree, that would make more sense, like, yeah, let's move the uniforms.
The uniforms, part of that was the contracted service, which we got rid of, so. We have the, um.
Oh, so now you have the.
So we've, we've purchased the initial, here's your initial package and then it's up to them to update what they need from.
So is that number realistic?
No, that did year-to-date expenditures, not for future years, I think the four thousand dollars is. Because now what we're doing is we're giving them an allowance, so it's, it's three hundred dollars a year for boots for each of the employees and then. Um, whatever they need to maintain their uniform package, I don't remember what the exact amount is.
And then with highway mowing. I know that with the new, uh, tractor they're purchasing, it has the ability. You'd have some to do some of that work, so maybe we can drop that line item.
Even if we moved it down to twenty. Even more, I, he, like I said, that was a heavy mulcher like for like twigs, but he said like the grass mulching along the side of the roads is still. A different.
Right.
That's still. But still, if I don't, we're not mowing anymore right now.
We mowed everything this year.
Yeah, he's, he's fulfilled.
So I'm just saying, that line item can probably be twenty, that's pretty close to being level funded for what we've spent for the year, there's three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Even if we cut the highway salary part-time down to fifteen, just take three thousand off there in case a snowstorm, but I don't know where our. Unless you think, cause we're still down, roughly down a person. And then he'll put it back out for bid, but it always seems to be roughly open, now maybe we can make that ten or fifteen.
Probably go down to ten, that's, let's go with twelve, twelve and a half.
Twelve, five, not arguing this.
Twelve, twelve's fine, okay.
And then like the hired equipment plowing, I know we're. Fifteen grand short there, but that could easily pop into, if we got a snowstorm, so I don't really touch that.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna go into the, regardless of storm, that's the, we're gonna get into the stipend. Pay in December for the on-call. Pay in December for the on-call potential.
You're saying, yeah. Uh but then hired equipment, we're under.
Hired equipment.
By a lot.
Yep, yeah, that.
So we can move that down, even if we made it fifteen.
And that actually should be good to go down because we've, we've increased our equipment.
Right.
To get more usable items over the last couple of years.
Do you have anything to say about, look like you're biting.
Yeah, no, I wasn't biting my tongue, I was just trying to figure out where the, uh, so we do have the shoulder machine that we rent, I don't know where it's gonna come from in this budget. But they rented the shouldering machine for five days um to do the.
The freshly paid for.
Right.
Yes, so that's gonna be coming out of one of these line items.
So that's not.
Even if we move that down to fifteen, took ten off there, I can't imagine we spent four thousand dollars for that, or would we?
I don't know, maybe. I I could see us taking.
Equipment maintenance, I mean, you know, if if we took one off the other and like moved equipment maintenance up to sixty, I don't know if that's realistic or if that was just an odd year of.
That was the engine replacement that we absorbed, that's why that's so over, that was a twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure. And then he also has um emissions issues right now that he's trying to work through.
On that engine?
No, that's the rusted exhaust.
On that replacement engine.
No, not on the, uh, yeah, it's on the same truck.
Highway fuel, I mean, can we save forty? Salt line, are we enough ahead?
Uh, no, so this, the salt line includes fourteen thousand dollars in magnesium chloride that was purchased, which will have enough for future years.
But and he's gonna move magnesium.
But that's going to move into the sand gravel stone. And we do have a load of salt that was delivered last week, I believe, to fill the shed.
And that's in here already?
No.
It's not include, it's not part of that seventy-one.
Alright, so we're at forty-two. Basically forty-three thousand on the two thirty-four line, if we move the magnesium chloride up. Seven one, seven nine. Fifty-seven. So I guess leave them level funded. Those two.
Do we say anything about dropping the um equipment parts? Line two twenty-eight.
We hadn't made that.
I would say down to twenty-five to thirty.
Twenty-seven five, the number?
I was gonna say, cause you know, I was thinking thirty, but.
And then so to really if we take. So sixty-nine thousand on the. So the highway equipment maintenance, two thirty, if you take the motor replacement out, it's really around forty-five thousand for the current year. But, I mean, that. Wheel excavator we just bought, just getting serviced, we're gonna have a brand new grader on here that shouldn't require any maintenance that we have to do in the next.
Yeah, it should be under contract.
It'll be under contract. Just wondering if we could cut this one down to fifty thousand.
Probably.
Tell us if you think we're going too far on this thing, but I mean, it we seem to have a little bit of margin on here and I understand. Half of this is, I don't wanna touch this stuff like is storm dependent, and so we're not looking at two twenty-seven, but. That's. Let's see, that was five. Ten. Fifteen. Taking eighteen thousand off right now.
No, it's not nothing.
Anybody see anything else or any other shaving? Cause those contracts we just served, can we just, was that the the one that we just sort of Irving, that doesn't include the fuel for the cubes?
No.
That was just heating fuel, okay.
Correct. And then off-road diesel for um.
The highway.
The pump at the recycling center.
So take eighteen thousand off the total of highway?
That's roughly what we've done. And I feel like there's a little bit we could squeak out of here if you wanna make it a round number, you know?
Well, it doesn't matter.
No, but we're still gonna make some margin here. Onto solid waste. This is definitely.
So the testing. Is the testing really gonna go down to four thousand?
I was basing it, when I had pulled these figures together, I was basing it on what I thought was through third quarter expenditures, but there was another invoice that came through. We're not gonna have any more for this year, so that should technically be bumped up to at least match what we had for this year, the PFA testing requirements have lessened.
Right, I know that they're, they became less tests as we go, but I wasn't sure if.
But that's too own.
Yeah, I think the four thousand is too low, so that was when I present, when we talked to the budget committee um last Thursday. That was one of the areas as well as the um the collection fees because our waste management contract. Obviously, it has an escalation every year, um I think at a bare minimum, it needs to go to two sixty realistically, it should go to two seventy-five.
That is the wrong direction.
I know.
Yep.
We moving this all the ways testing, line two forty-eight to. To like six?
Probably six.
Cause it'll probably.
Go up.
So it's gonna be the five, five, seven, seventy-three plus a little percentage increase. You think this collection fee should be two seventy-five?
About thirty thousand dollars a month.
Well, a long ways to buy a fucking container, isn't it? Yeah, right, right.
Not that we're there yet, but.
Maybe.
I know.
Equipment maintenance, um I did reduce that because the only piece of, well, we have the fork truck.
If we budget for it there, we can always.
Backhoe, but we're doing all of our own maintenance, I mean, the backhoe is still covered under. Probably still covered under service contract, but for the most part.
Get a truck that.
The line two fifty, household hazardous. Did we not expend it, we didn't, we didn't hold?
No, we did.
We did, we just haven't been billed for it.
But so we we take on a cost of that with Raven, they hold the, okay.
They charge us based on the um the estimated.
Yeah, you gotta consider how much is the actual collection, how much is, can we s. Can we figure out this, or somehow split the collection fees and the hauling fees?
Sure. I think it can be done with a little bit of work.
Yeah, yeah, well, of course, but that way. If if we think about actually doing the hauling ourselves. Would we save enough money by buying a truck and a container?
Well, the price for a used truck and a container have to be pretty darn close to that.
And that's, you know, that's not only hauling fees, you know, that's collection fees, so how much is it?
Right.
Tipping fees.
Then. That's but either potentially another employee that too, like somebody that either works more of a higher supervisor level at the. Thing, but it's definitely, definitely worth looking into, cause this is.
Can help us see it.
It would definitely, so I don't think it's something. Right, something you'd research on, but I don't think you could implement it.
Right, but if we start separating those costs.
Right.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, not this budget season, it's too late. Unless we manage to get some magic numbers to at least put a warrant article that we can say, do you want us to do this, that. It doesn't even have to have a monetary thing to it, at least just lets people vote to it and pushes it. Do you want us to move to our own blah blah blah? It's just gonna take us a year to implement it, but at least that would pass in April and it would tell us the next six months, we have to get our act together. Yeah, this is just a a giant negative, there's there's.
Took away half of what we saved in the highway.
If we just moved it back to highway.
For general assistance, um Charlotte, you had brought up the point, I'm not sure if we could implement it this year. Um but I talked to Alan about it and I've talked to other folks, other towns, and they do set up committees to kind of review.
Yeah, um, I I've got a whole template to the, and I think it is too late now, obviously, but I've got a whole template that. It it's not overly work-heavy, um but it's pretty honest more on the folks who are asking us for money.
Right.
But but simple, simple demographics, how much is it used, and then we can make sensible decisions about. How much we have to support each and sometimes just putting it out on your website, saying we're now accepting applications for grants.
I think the big thing is they, you know, some of the folks had said they actually come to. Either the public hearing, the deliberative, or the select board meeting groups, when we're talking about the budget.
Yeah.
To say this is the impact we've had on your town this past year. So.
I'd recommend level funding.
No, absolutely, I'm just saying, I think for two thousand twenty-six is, you know, considering implementing a, or starting a committee early next year.
I'll even change in line two eighty-five back to twelve fifty. Instead of twenty-five hundred.
Oh, you went way down, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the general assistance is, right.
The two.
That's level, yeah, but. And we don't have any choice on that, no, we have to do that and, and it was moved around so that it could be.
Yeah.
Spread out where needed, it's just a matter of, it's a bucket.
Yeah.
Right, it's probably not funded enough.
Sorry, I skipped over that.
There there was. Some years is underfunded, you can't, you can't predict it.
Circumstances this year.
Yeah, that was like the first time it's been used in ages, actually, and that was so much, yeah, yeah.
Which one?
A long time.
Higher ones, that's what I, yeah, okay, so we're back up there.
Yeah, on um on general assistance, that was for housing, someone in a hotel, on hotel.
Yeah.
So. Is there any way like that could be some sort of, instead of like gassing, if you need assistance, that we move it to some form of like. Trust fund or something like that, so we're funding a little bit each year, but it's saving into a a an account, and then when. The assistance arrives, then we then we have a bank account for it, instead of being like, we're gonna just throw randomly twenty-five thousand dollars on. The the bottom ones, I'm sorry, those are, those are used every year, the one above the general assistance.
Sixty-seven hundred dollars?
Yeah, something like that, like is that something that we just? We look to create a fund, maybe if we have some unassigned fund balance, we make something for, you know, we start, we seed it. And then after that, we can just start to feed it, only a thousand dollars, it cuts this down, and then if it doesn't get used, it's just collecting interest, which is helpful. I don't know if we can for certain general assistance things, there's certain rules from it. And I don't know what the, get into the the accounting side of it, but it. To be like, oh, we finally used one this year, we gotta actually use this line item that we've had zeroed out for the last five years, like it's. I don't want it to be just our own little, you know, thing that we use, if it, if it actually comes up.
Certainly establish an expendable trust fund and do that and have it for that purpose, but um with a caveat that if you ever. Overspend like. You still have to pull it from somewhere in your operating budget, because it's your obligation to.
Worried about is the over, cause right, we're obligated, so there has to be a caveat.
From another budget to be able to cover, I I mean, that was, I think, five months of a hotel stay for a single person, you could have an entire family displaced.
Right.
And twenty-five thousand, exactly.
But like you said, Matt, if you see, if we can seed it with some money, that would reduce the the possibility. You know, overspending, you know, gotten into trouble. Um but then the agent to expend, we'd need somebody who could actually do that. Because it would need to be spent.
In that year.
Well, right, how do you, like, when it's requested, how does it get spent?
Well, I I mean, we would just expend it and we do the same thing that we do for like the building maintenance expendable trust fund, we just gather up the invoices after a certain period. Request a withdrawal and then.
Alright, so we would be the agents to expend, you would just gather the invoices, so.
So something to think about, I mean, I don't know if this is gonna happen more often, cause we just, we put everything in one item, right?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense, Matt, it's just kind of, because we don't normally spend it.
Right.
But.
Cause I think it starts, it was much higher, which we had budgeted was much higher, I think.
We used to budget higher for it, yeah. Then for this reason, because when it does hit.
Right, it's hard.
It hits hard.
And housing is the huge thing, you know, if you're doing utilities or food, not so much, but when you're housing people. Which that need may not go down necessarily.
Yeah.
Enough shelters.
Alright. I mean, that might be a warrant article and it could be funded from. You'll definitely get to know what our unassigned fund balance is gonna be next time. That makes a big difference.
Anyhow, and so, yeah, I guess my whole point with social services side was that.
Yeah.
Have the word maybe consider in February is putting together a committee.
To do.
To.
Review.
Review, create, well, create an application and then kind of put it out there to these service providers well in advance. Um that we normally just give money to that this is.
And they're used to that, but that's really not unusual.
Okay. Onto rec.
Steve, were you? Did you wanna like? Talk about two eighty-five more? I just thought we should level fund everything to the same level that we did last year. Just that one line, right?
Right. Do we know why it was increased?
You asked for it.
Yeah, they just asked for it, no matter.
Their letter was.
And I, I don't have them with me, but some of them did have some demographic information, others didn't, that might have been the one that did.
Oh, that was the one, that's service, um, six kids in our community this year.
So that was the letter, that was probably more specific.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and that one's, um, that's that's a service heavily used by the police department, right?
Yeah, okay, so we leave that alone.
Yeah, I think so.
Long as they use it.
But again, it means something a little different, will also let us know that our neighbors in wealthier towns or towns that don't have a tax cap may be able to do more. For some of these agencies when they come.
At least they were, at least they were preemptively thinking about those things too, saying why they wanted more money.
So a lot of notes on this one, you wanna help give a little roadmap on how we're moving that?
Okay, so I did.
Trying to find, follow the money here, like what are we doing?
I did split this up a little bit better for the budget committee, so initially, um, the park field beach maintenance, which is two ninety-two. That included the proposal for a gate attendant for potential people covering. Position for fourteen weeks.
Humans?
For humans, because you gotta figure we're open nine to seven, seven days a week. Memorial Day to Labor Day, obviously, you can't rely on one person to do all that, or even two, so realistically, four. People potentially cover.
Isn't that in two eighty-eight though?
Yes, so that's where I was going, initially, it was all in there, we broke it out, so where we funded the beach. Yes, so that's where I was going, initially, it was all in there, we broke it out, so where we funded the beach monitor position this year was in the part-time salary, so. Twenty six, two oh eight. Um the explanation for that is the asterisk recommendation on two ninety, or the unmarked line.
Are you saying it was taken from?
The part-time salary.
Cause it's it's there, so you're saying you wanna move it?
No, I'm saying that there was no budget, we put one in, so we expended from the part-time salary line for the beach monitor. If there is potential to move forward with a beach or a gate attendant, the four potential positions that they're proposing. Then it would be more appropriate to have it in that sat, that part-time salary line, because that's where we've expended for a similar position in the past. And that leaves just the remaining. Six hundred and eighty dollars for what's needed for the beach between the water testing, beach line, signage, et cetera, porta potties.
Where did beach line go? No buttons, new every year, but those are.
Beach lines are good.
I think that was more of a.
Just a signage.
It's equipment.
Not just equipment.
And it doesn't include the porta potties.
And then the twenty four thousand eight hundred for the park field beach maintenance, that's for primarily your mowing. Contract.
So can we scratch? Beach maintenance out of there, can you make this other one an actual line item and we'll just track them separately? Should we know that the park and field is, there's a lot of mowing, is that?
There is, so that's Marston that's here, that's also a lot of other community space within. Well, this property that the rec kind of absorbs because there's nowhere else to put it.
Right, Clyburn.
The square.
Square, Clyburn, old firehouse.
I know, but we paid twenty five thousand here, we paid five thousand dollars under the cemetery one. Telling me we can't hire a kid ourselves and buy a mower for less than thirty thousand dollars.
The prisoners.
Lisa, we're in safety orange.
That's true.
If we were able to put that position in place, that would take care of our shoveling needs in the winter as well.
I think that's a.
If we had a groundskeeper.
But that, that probably gets, how much is the shoveling one?
It's been so hard to get somebody to shovel.
Two thousand dollars.
That's a lot of mowing now.
It is.
That's nasty mow. There is no complaint, wow, that's not true. Cause if I go up, my lot's not.
There's a lot of complaining here.
I'm complaining.
You're not dead yet, Steve.
That's why it checks his lot.
He's preparing.
My ancestors are though.
Okay. I mean, do we think there's any way to save money there, do we take it on or not? Is it just too complicated to?
I don't think you wanna do that.
Oh.
The only way you could do that is if you wanted to hire a parks and recreation or.
More grounds maintenance crew.
But now you're talking between benefits and everything else, you're probably talking a hundred thousand dollars.
You'd have to kind of put it, or put it into like, um.
I don't wanna spend more.
Highway, you know.
Yeah, like.
Spend more than you would, yeah, you can't do it anyway, cause now, they they haven't got enough time to do what they're doing.
Right, right, you'd have to hire another person.
He would go there, that's like.
Position and, and then do you hire a full-time position and kind of.
Line rent, send it out, send it out to bed.
Between, between.
A mower.
The recycling. And highway and mowing and stuff, I mean, are we at a point where we need an extra person to kind of do, you know, spread those things out?
Well, there's technically mowing underneath the.
Grounds and maintenance.
Highway.
No, the. Seven thousand, oh, the shoveling, no, um, the recycling center, the leach field has to be mowed.
That's, that's very specific mowing, that's not done by our contracted mowers, that's, yeah.
Then you get, see, we just get one of those mowers that can do alongside the street.
Gets moved twice a year, we have to.
Make sure there's no growth, there's a.
Oh.
Pictures.
Solid waste.
Don't knock over the stacks and.
Definitely don't have those stacks.
Candy canes.
Drains correctly.
The candy canes.
Okay, okay, fine, I regret it.
No, I mean, I think, again, as you grow, I mean, you think, you look at all these individual items, and if you say, okay, that's up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars, we could pay somebody a hundred thousand.
No, I love that idea, and keep saying.
You could buy the equipment, maintain the equipment, store the equipment, buy another potential truck.
And maybe, and maybe it's the same person that takes the recycling to, you know.
Yeah, like, you could use them for a lot of.
Right.
Right, so it may be something we start kind of looking at.
And Stephen, I have our right on mowers too. Yeah, I.
You don't need to take on anymore. You've got like six committees around.
Mowing would be refreshing, wouldn't it, just get out there, mow.
I did mow at once.
So. Two eighty seven, the budget is finally adding the remainder of.
The assistant parks and rec director two.
The normal salary line.
Correct, so twenty five percent.
That's, that's been a two-year. Changeover we've been doing.
Well, we could go back to fifty percent.
And then.
And.
I'm just wondering if there's, if we're trying to. I don't know what, do we, do I know what rec revolving has?
You're not gonna have a lot, I don't think, at the end of this year.
They're doing the the quick calculations, we're still waiting for the um, the year-end salaries to post. Um, I think Bridget just got that information from Betsy the other day, and then the credit card transaction fees.
Huge.
Um.
Well, they they forward the, uh, most of those.
Yeah.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
It was for like fourteen thousand?
It was in years past, correct, um. I think Bridget estimated that she was gonna have like. Forty seven thousand dollars, and that was gonna be potentially what they were gonna be looking to purchase the new rec van with.
Alright.
There was a lot of discussion at the budget committee about what is a revolving fund. Explained, explained.
Be used for.
What can it be used for, and I think there were still members walking out, kind of going, we want to get our hands on that. Um but Brid, I thought Bridget did a good job of explaining it.
She did.
They're looking for an additional van to replace a van, yeah, that other one still will run for.
Right.
Sidebar, do we ever send that out for rust proofing at all or undercoating, I know we don't really drive it much in the winter.
No, it gets stored in the winter. Bridget just found out when they took it for inspection that they, it has the original tires on it, twelve years old.
Oh my gosh, I must be cracked.
It's a miracle.
It passed this year, but they will probably have to be replaced next.
When we store it in the.
Old fire station.
Fire station. We should make sure that we put it on little pieces of plywood, so that the, the rubber is not on the cement floor.
Whatever they've been doing, it's been working.
So the potential here is the. The real line item is the, the beach.
And do we wanna? Would we wanna put that on a warrant?
The beach budget.
The beach attendants?
It's just part of the rec.
I would.
Could you think about that?
Absolutely.
Like less mortgage.
Yeah, right, right, but there's a good reason to put it on there.
Right.
Do you want the beach open, do you wanna not open? Here's what it's gonna take to open it?
Right.
Don't want it, don't open it.
Let's see.
Nope.
People decide.
Me. I mean, I, I still think for.
Again, it was just an estimate, she was trying to make it work, you have.
Because you, you can't have it staffed by two people or one person seven days a week, or it just doesn't.
Even vaguely work.
No. So even if, even if you had two, and then you have somebody call out and.
Right.
You could look at potentially, you could get tens of the hours a bit, I mean, I don't know if you have it, have to have it open at nine in the morning, you could look at your time or two, when it's the heat of day.
Ten hours a day, seventy hours a week.
Hours. I mean, we, what, each of us were down there sixty times this, this summer, and um, there weren't people there at nine o'clock in the morning. Once, once, there was somebody there at nine o'clock in the morning, and there's very rarely anybody there at seven o'clock at night.
Right, so just something to consider when you're looking at the numbers, so you could say, well, maybe you could reduce that one if you, if you cut down the hours.
Wow. How many hours uh season is it open?
Not that many, good question, actually.
Be nine to.
Thirteen.
I guess that's just another, we'll leave all that there.
Nine to seven and apply that.
So it's seventy hours a week.
Even if you shaved a few hours here or there, you're not really killing that.
Nine hundred and eighty.
Line item down a lot.
That's how much we're gonna pay the, somebody to do it.
Line two ninety seven. The eight hundred dollars for a computer, is that something we can take care of this year, just a little shaving and stuff?
Yeah, I think we can probably repurpose the computer.
Oh.
Because um, right now.
Black Friday deals, get up there and go buy a computer.
Well, not only that, I mean, like, we did just uh. It it would strictly be for people to do online registration at the counter and for them to be able to process credit cards, because right now, Bridget's computer is the only one that can do that.
Yeah.
And so they want the phone right at the front, right at the basket.
And then. Our office supply line needs as many of the, like, okay, it's not two thousand dollars for ink, never mind. I read that wrong for a sign, I'm trying. So we might be able to shave a little bit down to the. Two thousand, take that, ta- take that computer off, we could.
Yeah.
So all that's there. And. Not much to do there, that's the salary. I don't see how we can really touch with the libraries giving us a.
No.
They're kind of operating on a skeleton budget pretty effectively over there, and if they say they need six pennies more, they're usually pretty thrifty on those six pennies. Of course, those are now no longer in production.
Items. Let me get a detailed memo on.
And conservation was another person that was probably the thriftiest person that we have. So I don't. What's the, oh, the river sign, sign for protect the river.
Yeah. And that was the one thing, that thing got cut last year.
Oh, did it?
I, yeah. I don't.
Look, the mileage is down to thirty dollars and ten cents, I mean, this guy is.
Just for Sam to go to one conference, I think.
You can calculate exactly seventy four cents, I think this is.
Can't complain.
You can have all eighteen eighty five dollars.
So Alan, did you record all of those proposed changes?
I, I think I did get most of them, they were either written down or I started to put them in the worksheet on the fly, so.
So if you could get those to us.
Yes.
And then do we wanna move on to the warrant articles, and then we'll have to look at this with those changes, and then we're gonna have to do some additional counting most likely.
Oh, okay.
Especially once we talk some of the fire or highway if we.
Right.
So just for um.
And police.
Planning purposes, this, whatever we come up with for bottom line after tonight's amendments, we'll go to the budget committee for their review on Thursday. Um that's their first initial review, and then it does not come back up for discussion until December eleventh, so it will be back on your.
Agenda on the first.
Radar for the first.
Yeah.
Um for additional trimming is necessary.
What do you mean, doesn't come up to us or to the budget committee?
It, it doesn't come back up to the budget committee after their initial review Thursday until December eleventh, because they move on to the school, so that gives us the next meeting to.
Do more.
Find to, I would, for a goal, I would like to be able to have the bulk of the warrant articles with a monetary value. Assigned to them, figured into that, so.
Yeah, no, that would, I think we could probably do, do that and figure out what we really need. And um.
I would propose that we consider adding another workshop on December eighth.
At least one.
Yeah, well, I think before, but before, I'm just, that's three weeks from now.
Four to the eleventh?
Yeah, so I think December eighth. We should consider. Oh, really, it doesn't matter the date, I was just thinking of Monday.
Yeah, no, Monday's.
Does that work for? Works for me.
Best.
Seven o'clock, okay.
Time.
So we would meet on the first as our regular meeting.
Correct.
Meet on the eighth as a workshop.
You'd still be covering the budget, but this would be leftover work from the.
Right, right, yeah, no, that's fine, that makes sense. And then meet on the whatever fifteenth, is that?
Yeah. So I think then you could at least be presenting to the budget committee, Charlotte and Alan, something hopefully more. Trimmed.
Alan just props me right now. Thank God. And on the eighth, are we gonna meet at seven, or are we gonna try?
Could we do six or six thirty?
No, let's stick with six thirty, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
It will just be strictly for the budget workshop.
Right, it'll just be workshops, so we won't have to do normal stuff. If we start changing times, it just screws us up.
Speak for yourself.
Screws me up.
So six thirty. On the eighth. Alright, so warrant articles. Do you want me to review what we had gone over at our last meeting?
Yes, please.
Cause I don't think I. Um. So the police department's new drone seventeen thousand five hundred.
Hopefully that's gonna come out of their tech fund.
Right, so that would be. Draw from the tech fund, but then they're going to wanna put money back into the tech fund, right?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So the tech.
Last year, that was.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought it was ten thousand.
It was ten.
So we're net of seven five, seventy five million. Um potential police station replacement research, um, just using the power amount we earmarked from two thousand twenty four was forty thousand.
Right.
Um SCBA compressor, which is came from the CIP of forty thousand dollars. I'm gonna leave out the TBDs for now, these are just items that we had discussed cost, um, rec van fifty thousand, but to come from rec revolving.
So technically, if we go back to the drone, cause that's coming, that would be a withdrawal from the tech fund. And the van coming from rec revolving, we don't technically need to do warrant articles for those.
Right, okay.
Right, uh, yeah, we don't need to do warrant articles for them, but if we wanna put money in the tech fund, we'd still need a tech fund.
Seventy, okay.
So it'd be the ten thousand plus.
Ten K for tech.
We wanna create more than we actually have to.
Okay, I agree.
And the same thing with the um. The compressor purchase, it's just gonna be a matter of whether or not you wanna add more to replenish that fund.
So that's coming out of the fire department?
Yes.
Last year, we put thirty thousand into that.
What we did one year.
Um, the.
Compressor?
The SCBA compressor, if we're purchasing that this year out of the. I think we named your agents to expend on that, or you already were.
Is that the fire and rescue vehicle for though, or there's a separate?
So, alright.
It is, they were combined.
So should we just go down this list of what we had last year?
I've got them right here. That was thirty thousand dollars that we put into it last year.
Right.
So that's coming, that's coming out of fires, so that's not a warrant for the SCBA. Does the SCBA need, that one needs to be warranted, cause it's coming out of a.
No, I don't think it does, the, the compressor purchase does not, and as long as your name's agents to expend.
That's what I thought.
Um, and I think we cleaned that up last year.
Cleaned up something.
We cleaned up a couple of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we add thirty thousand, we expend forty thousand, we're.
No, I think you just. No, I think you just add the thirty.
Right, I'm saying, but we would expend forty thousand for the SCBA.
Right.
So we're going ten thousand down from.
Yeah.
When's the next thing on the CIP?
Million dollars for an engine replacement in twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's, but that's, we're gonna be way short.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking. Put, putting thirty in is not gonna be enough, so.
Right, I know, that's.
Fire, SCBA.
Kind of what I was hinting at.
But.
But we're not gonna be able to put more money in unless.
Twenty twenty-nine or one million.
Unless it gets increased at deliberative and.
Passed by three fess votes.
Right.
And then again, a town election passed by three fess votes.
We, we can propose warrants, but again, the unassigned fund balance has grown. Potentially, if there's a little bit here or there, you could put some of that from there, so it's not taxation.
Yes.
But until we know that amount.
Until we know that amount.
We're just saying numbers, I agree. Fire, SCBA fund, you said it was thirty, but I'm just saying that number might have to be.
So that was last year, so Article ten was to see if the town will vote to appoint the select board as agents to expend for the fire vehicle SCBA capital reserve fund previously established.
So we can expend for the compressor purchase, it's just a matter of adding into the fund to replenish, whatever that.
Right, I mean ideally, it would be good to at least put in some K that we're gonna take out.
Right.
Okay.
Especially if we're looking at a million dollars and.
Yeah.
Well, that's another fund altogether, right?
No, it's the same one that combines, truck, yes, CBA.
Really?
Yeah, it was combined.
Two thousand five, two thousand five.
As the fire rescue.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You're good.
The police technology fund.
Thank you.
So last year, we put ten thousand in the police technology fund. Take out the drone out of that.
Ambulance has to be on there again.
But that one's.
That one's a wash.
That one's a wash.
But I'm saying, it's, it is a warrant article that needs to come out.
Yeah, because it's a um, special revolving fund, so.
Ambulance, forty thousand, no tax.
And I don't know, um, that forty thousand has been a plug figure for the past couple of years.
It was forty-five, forty-five last year.
Forty-five, yeah, it was forty-five.
Yep. Forty-five last year, Article eight.
Yep, so that was.
That's why I pull out the book.
That was increased because we're running both ambulance now. Um.
Well, that's offsetting anyway, though.
We may not.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
We may not run both ambulances, so maybe it was only gonna be.
We just need to make sure that the expenditures, the year-to-date expenditures this year were covered. Whatever that plug figure is going to be.
Okay.
So that's a question mark?
Forty-five thousand is the starting point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, we don't have any details for the paving of the library.
No.
Paving of the library.
And, right, you said and?
Paving of the library, the cost for paving and lighting, potentially lighting. Um, AC replacement at the community center, we had the thirty thousand dollars. Audiovisual at twenty thousand dollars, this is part of the CIP, so I think that's gonna be paid for.
So the um, the audiovisual comes out of the cable franchise fees, there's no warrant article needed. The thirty thousand AC replacement will hopefully come from funds that are left in the expendable trust fund, so we have to talk about potentially replenishing that.
Expendable trust.
Yep.
That's the kind of thing that maybe we could spend from the uh.
Unaside funds.
Uh, yeah.
So then it comes back down to details on what the paving costs potentially would be.
Regular paving.
Regular paving. Library AC.
Library AC would also come out of that expendable trust fund.
Um, isn't there, yeah, there's like invasive species.
Right, so invasive species is ten thousand.
Yeah.
Are we losing ground on that one?
If you go back to Mial's presentation from October.
He's looking to do a treatment in twenty-six.
Potential money. Um, so they were looking to potentially withdraw fifteen thousand from the invasive species fund, and we have. In there. Eighty-seven thousand in there, eighty-seven thousand.
Like forty. Seventy, seventy-seven. So. We're probably okay putting ten in.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
But what was the, what was the cost for the fifteen was for treatment, or fifteen? Was that the?
No, that's what that was.
They're estimating, they're estimating a thousand per acre, about fifty thousand in total cost if we get. Um, the max of DES grant funding that we can get is up to a fifty percent reimbursement, so that's gonna be anywhere up to twenty-five thousand. Fifteen thousand from invasive species fund, ply is gonna contribute ten thousand.
Alright, that's, that's the, that's what I remember.
Yeah. Good news only tonight, Steve, good news only.
I, I think sticking with the ten thousand is at least fine right now.
We have to go with what was proposed, Steve.
And then uh, like the reevaluation again, we gotta start budgeting for that.
So I put twenty-five down for twenty, for the reassessment. Is that what we're thinking, to bring us up to the hundred, around a hundred five that would be needed?
Yeah.
What was a hundred and five to do it?
This year.
Twenty-five, we don't know what it's gonna cost in five more years.
And it's five, right, so that.
So if we do twenty-five for five years, that gives us.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-five.
Great.
Not enough.
Hopefully it's enough.
Close, maybe, right?
So hopefully, we don't need that much.
And then. Fire rescues, SCBA would be forty thousand dollars. Fire rescue SCBA.
Thought we talked about that one already.
Yeah, I'm just going ahead.
Okay, sorry.
Cause somebody brought back the reassessment. Yep.
Highway truck.
Yeah. So last year, the highway truck was seventy thousand dollars that we put in, we pulled out. A lot of that fund for the grader.
Yeah, these aren't accurate.
No, they're not, well, cause we haven't received a grader yet.
They haven't received yet.
True, no, but the other one that was up is, the reevaluation still shows eighty-four thousand.
Because we're still waiting on the final invoice.
So, okay, so these are.
So. Yeah.
But they're gonna be.
Depleted.
Okay, so highway truck.
So we need to throw something in there.
Yes, we do. When's the next one on the CIP?
Let's see if I can find it here.
I thought they said the F-five fifty, which is around a hundred thousand dollar truck.
Gotta get to it. I'm trying to remember how, navigate through SharePoint.
For what?
In our tab.
The shared drive.
Can't help you.
No. I was getting lost in here. It's not for. Come on, that's slow, the internet's slow.
So we're at one twenty-five before, total, before we get to the highway truck. And that, we haven't even looked at paving and color works.
Which is a big.
We're paving at the library.
Hi, here we go, CIP. I'm getting the right folder anyway.
I think the next one was supposed to be the F-five fifty that we just kind of replaced, but it was supposed to make it to.
It's only a couple of years out.
And those are about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand to replace, and that's F-five fifty-ish. He was hoping to maybe scavenge some equipment, but they still run that cost.
Come on, show me some documents.
The big trucks are the ones that, those are six hundred thousand. Or ten more.
Something like that.
The party when the grader arrives.
Hey, hopefully it arrives for the holiday party.
Freaking parade.
Hopefully it arrives before March.
Yeah, seriously, yeah.
No, but they uh, back, the, the last ten wheeler that we bought, the Big Mac truck, and it had the big, that one has like the aluminum wheels on it, I remember, they drove that in the holiday parade that year. It was awesome, it's a shiny truck. Thanks for bringing it up.
So did you plug a figure for that one yet?
The highway truck?
No.
He's looking to see where the next.
See if I can.
Get the document.
But for now, let's, I, look at the numbers, I don't know, you can do one of fifty. Right, I don't think.
Highway department next replacement is the F-five fifty and twenty-seven for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you, see, she has it on her fingertips. I can't get the SharePoint open.
You have to be on the guest network.
Yeah, I know.
We haven't put in the fifty.
Any enough grade.
That's, if we throw that in there at fifty, that's a total of one seventy-five before we looked at any paving. Do you think we'll have some estimates for the library and from Steve?
I didn't get an impression.
I know, like, we're not gonna get the.
I think I can request it, but.
We're not gonna get the box cover since you.
No.
That was, that's gonna be a, a next idea, next year idea.
For those three cohorts?
Potentially doing one of the box cover, instead of paving one year, do a box cover, but there was too much engineering time involved for it to happen. In this current year. There was a few roads to potentially pave, but we don't have quotes yet, so.
The trustees at the library really had what they needed to give us an estimate for the library.
I thought they had an amount.
I don't think so.
It's, it's on the CIP at the seventy-eight thousand seven hundred. Um, and I think those were just based on. Very preliminary estimates from Jen Phillips.
Yeah, but she got them from somebody.
She did, um. I wanna say she took like, back in the summer, she took like the paving cost per. Square foot or linear mile or whatever it was and calculated it out herself.
Oh, maybe, I thought she, I thought she had a, what's that? Right, yes, it includes lighting, yes.
Should we talk maybe splitting it out for two, they said they might have to do the conduit, but if we can rip it out.
Right, we did talk, we did ask her about that when she was here.
Conduit.
Right.
What?
We asked her about that when she was here.
Right. She preferred to do both at the same time, because lighting's really bad.
You said we can't pave down to the lower one because the town owns the lower lot and not the library.
The town owns the library anyway.
Yeah. It's just two separate parcels.
Right.
It's just, the, the library has the express use of that property for their function, but that lower lot is separate, it's open above, so. They can't just say, hey, we're gonna overtake it for excess, because it's not designated for library use.
Right, can you decide that to them, though? It seems like a cleanup.
I, I don't see, I, I mean, it's, it's overflow parking regardless of whether the SAU office needs it, or the Grange, or members, it'll just be municipal parking.
But I think to the point, if we were to make a driveway into it, and it's owned by two separate entities or whatever.
Well, it's still owned by the town, it's one entity.
Yeah. Make it one tax.
Alright, we could merge the lots if.
If we're gonna be paving it.
Right, I mean, right, we have the potential to merge the lots.
Cause that was the problem, right, is that coming out on that corner.
Yeah.
So we don't have a number on that yet, we need a number.
The other numbers we've got for you. For the other warrant articles.
Other warrant articles, do we have?
No, I'm saying every other warrant article except for those two, we have numbers for, potentially, but. The next two meetings, we're gonna have to.
What else did we have for?
It was the highway truck invasive.
So the, the town building maintenance?
That's the other one we have not, town building maintenance.
Town building maintenance, the library paving and lighting.
And regular paving.
And reg, wow, right.
Okay.
So do you have these written down, Tim?
Yep, I can send them to you.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna go through a real quick, but you can send them to me, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, clean up puts not warrant in on, we said a lot of different things.
Yeah, I put an asterisk next to all the warrants.
That numbers guy.
Anything else on the warrant articles? Fifty thousand dollars is the proposed number for the highway truck reserve funds. We don't have numbers for the paving, Steve. No. No, we don't have a number for that, Steve. You're welcome.
The uh. And then the potential. If we wanna just put down as a placeholder initiating a, a general assistance fund. The, the potential of creating a general assistance fund.
I think that's a good.
Cause we just take the money from that line item anyway, so it wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, we could keep the seventeen hundred in there for the welfare director, and then potentially move the five thousand.
Right.
From the general assistance.
Just a start or something, but then.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And then if we don't expend anything, then we're, we're rolling it forward for future years.
So we have the directors would stay in the regular budget.
And then the only other, I guess, the other warrant article wouldn't have a tax impact, but we talked about for the police.
For the exploratory.
Right.
The forty thousand.
No, 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 um.
Cause we missed that one. We did miss that one.
Changing the use of their um.
Oh my gosh. Oh, yeah, there's special, special, there's police special duty funds.
Yeah, especially.
The special detail fund.
Yeah, so that won't have any impact, that'll just be a matter of um. Repurposing it or, or changing.
How much is in there again?
Forty thousand.
Oddly enough, the same amount as a police research thing.
Yeah.
But it has to be used for um, police special details related, so like it would be.
We could change the use.
Say, we change the use for.
Change the use to.
Do, do you wanna change the use, do you wanna withdraw from said use for this?
That would be the following year.
Yeah, you couldn't withdraw the same year.
Do we wanna move on to policy review?
What's that, all of the taxes, for tax beating?
In preparation for our next meeting, you'll go through. Companies that are eligible for tax deeding or legal, so I just wanna make sure everybody's familiar with this policy, as it was set by your predecessors.
as it was set by your predecessors.
Did they create it or did they um, was this just a general, like adoption or re revision of it?
I'm sure it came from somewhere.
I'm just like if this had been around for a period of time before.
Uh, this was adopted in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Do we need to adopt and sign this one tonight?
You don't need to adopt and sign it, I just want to make sure um you do have at least two occupied properties that are coming up that are eligible for tax deed in arrears of well more than twenty thousand dollars in back taxes, so.
The use sound like a law.
No, I know, just dropping the bucket.
Just saying twenty thousand.
So then our next meeting will be reviewing those properties, but again, no one said.
And you have to act on them, so you have all the information to pre-review over the next two weeks, just make sure you're familiar with them. Um, I'll send you the extra information about the ones that are being occupied, because those could be potentially situations where you then become landlords, have to go through an eviction process.
You sent us the recommended steps to follow.
Tracy did, yep, she outlined it for you.
Action items for from prior meetings. Uh, the select board role and subdivision process, John, you've given us an update on that, so we just need to set up a meeting with. What's that?
Dale should be setting up the meeting, cause he he took point on the whole thing.
He did.
Okay.
So.
But did did we give him our part of it?
I I gave him our couple of things.
Great.
Um.
Oh, sorry, you weren't here for this.
Yeah, sorry.
I did give him our couple of things, just and started it, and that's when he suggested having a basically a work session with some department heads and stuff like that, you know, I've or committee heads, chairs. Kind of make sure everybody's on the same page.
So it'd basically be him for zoning.
Right.
Um, planning board and select board.
Pretty much, that's, I'm not sure what else needs to be done.
Okay. Alright, so what's the deadline for that again?
December first.
First. Look, looky here, you were all going, we've had so much time.
So your next meeting.
So between now and then.
Between now and then, Dale, between now and then, Dale committed to having a draft for us.
Okay.
Oh, well, that's pretty good.
Um, and then, policy review update?
I don't have anything new, I, we still have the um potential e-bike and facilities.
Use.
Use.
And then we'll have the performance bond to officially vote on.
Correct.
And then the items in the signature file, do we need to vote on those?
Um, so, yes, the the contract with Avatar assessing for a period of twenty-six to twenty-thirty.
And then the M O U with the Nottingham food pantry, so. What's that?
Yes.
Yep. So do we have a, has everybody had an opportunity to review those items?
So. Changes, I I was trying to look at the the change for the um, in the M O U.
On the M O U.
Yep, um.
So their board met this summer, I wanna say it was back in July and.
So it referred back to that other document. Did that other, I was trying to review in that document, but did that document cover all those things that we had listed out?
No. No, it didn't, it's it's a very general.
I, that's what it looked like to me. Is that important?
I think I think it's important to be very specific, because we have been questioned being um local government, we're not supposed to show any preference towards any protection.
So we need to find, put that back in then.
Yes, I agree.
Alright.
Can we just put a sign on the door before you go in that all the views and whatever expressed in this room are not part of the town of Nottingham, is that something we can do? Cause it.
It's town property.
Right.
It doesn't matter, but town property, you're not, they're not a entity of us, we can control the entity of us and we're kind of.
But there's the misconception that it is because.
That's why I'm saying you put a sign.
Putting the sign there.
All views and opinions expressed in this room are not of the town of Nottingham.
But then you're asking people who need something to.
If if they needed something, we can't control how they operate, if this Nottingham food pantry was operating out of a Catholic church and you went there, you would see the symbolism that was at that locale, so they can see the symbolism here and whatever symbolism of the people that are operating.
But you know, when you walk into a church, or if you walk into, you know, a a political party office, that's pretty clearly stated, when you walk into a town office, you're walking into a United States government building.
Right, but there's.
But none of their stuff is outside of their area. It's in their area, so if you're going into their area, as if if this was located anywhere else, if, so if it was located at a church.
If it wasn't a mall.
If it wasn't a mall, it's it's there.
Public, the differences that we're.
We're renting a space.
We're.
And it's charged and and in kind donation, we're, it's our space.
It should be to fulfill the mission of that organization, which those particular things we're talking about, political affiliation and religious materials are not part of.
Stayed in mission, right, on their pamphlet.
But I'm just saying.
So that's where it's coming into question.
Organizations are the ones that operate food pantries, so it can't be saying that you're surprised that you're seeing it, but if we don't want us to be associated with it, a sign that says, when you enter into here, the opinions and views expressed in this room, which we are we we kind of, we've been put in this position, because the food pantry is in this building, but we have to understand how that they, a food pantry comes to operate, most food pantries are religious based.
Oh, I don't think that's true.
I mean, the, okay.
The big ones are not.
Okay.
Um, I I mean, we could potentially do that for every office, too, just so, you know, the people who are working in here may not express the.
Those are town employees that work for the town. There is a very big distinction between that room and.
Was a problem in the tax collectors office. It's quite a bit of political information.
But it, but it has been corrected, it's not.
I I don't think that's identified with the issue of a separation of church and state. A political viewpoint of an elected official or an employee, yes, that can be managed throughout the administration, but.
That you can have a, you can have a political opinion as a civil employee, like if the person got hired, I mean, you know, you could wear your red tie.
Yeah.
You can't put, you can't put vote for Charlotte.
But you can't, but you're, you should, you should.
After the end of three years, she might not want that.
Yeah, but I run for so many things, dog catcher. Yeah, no, see differently.
I I will certainly propose it, I mean, just to to continue, I mean, we went stalemate on this M O U, which we are trying to make sure that we have them established with every other organization, this was a missing piece, so do I move forward with the document that out, that outlines more definitively what the expectation is, or go with a more general?
I would prefer the more detailed, like we had discussed over the summer and in the spring.
Is that the general consensus of the board?
Right, I mean, I think the detail's important, but to Matt's point, if we're gonna do something not detailed like that, then we should put up a sign. Right, if we, you know, I'm I'm not sure, you said we, you had something for us to sign, and I'm like, what are we signing?
What was in the packet of meeting?
Right, well, are we signing the less detailed one?
No, I think the.
She has the potential to sign this one right here, in that pack, to your written.
That's the one that was, that was the edit of the uh, the food pantry.
Yep, so the question is, do we put it back, have that added back in and then sign it at our next meeting?
Right, so this was the food, the food pantry one, which is the less.
Detailed.
Detailed one, and if we're gonna sign this one, I think putting up a sign is appropriate.
I say, well, I've my opinion is that we edited, added back in what we had originally proposed and then proposed again.
And I'm okay with that too.
And then sign it or vote on it at the next meeting.
Uh, I'm okay with, I'm okay with that too.
They were not. I'm just saying, they weren't, they didn't like that, so it's like if we get to this stalemate, what do we do? So I'm just trying to figure out, like, we don't wanna sign that, because we feel we wanna be able to provide maybe somebody.
I think then maybe we meet with the board or have the board come to a meeting.
I mean, we don't wanna be unreasonable, but we have gotten complaints.
Right, right.
Um, responding to those, and you know, they do a wonderful thing, and we want them here, I'm, as a taxpayer, I'm happy to help support them, I'm glad that we're giving them any kind.
We do have to have, I agree, an M O U, because they're not directly affiliated with us in the building, outline the boundaries of whatever's going on, but um.
And that was the director's home beef, I believe, it's just, why are we signing an M O U, we never had it before.
Right.
It wasn't about any political statements or religious statements, it was.
To have it agree, yeah, just like every other organization that uses the fields and uses the.
Why are we?
Right.
Right, and we did get a concerned person, at least. So, you know, I I think that if we're gonna go with this, we need to put up a sign that says something like Matt said, you know, what.
Opinions, beliefs, whatever happens.
Whatever is.
Enjoy your turkey.
As of the food pantry, not part of the town of Nottingham. But otherwise, we should put it in here to not have that stuff.
I'm a volunteer for the food pantry. And I don't step in there and. I'm sorry, I think it to myself, um, I say I'm a volunteer for the food pantry. Um, and I think very highly of them, but I think that all of the organizations that use a government building should be respectful of using a government building. And um, and we should have a separation, that's pretty clear, I think people are already confused about the the pantry itself, that it's it's a privately run five oh one three C, um, and I think people often confuse that. Um, but people are very generous, it's a wonderful program, it should go on, and hopefully this won't cause any big problems.
That's not the intention.
No, no, that's not the intention at all, it's just, and that's, that's the whole confusion is that people have the impression that it is run by the town, and it is not.
And it's not.
So either we have that as part of the M O A or, or whatever it is.
M O U.
M O U. Um, or we put up a sign that, you know, or have them put up a sign that says it is a private organization, blah, 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 the expressions are not, opinions are not part of the town of Nottingham.
I think Ellen has done so much work updating policies, trying to clear things up, I think doing things the right way, so that organizations have these M O Us and it's just across the board, it's not picking any one particular organization. We particularly support this organization, I think we show how important it is to us.
Obviously, we support it, because we provide them the space.
Yeah, and and heat and electricity, and we're happy to do so. Um, but I think it's it's fair to follow the rules and that everybody should for everyone's comfort.
Steve.
That's right.
Thank you, Steve.
That's wonderful.
So can we get a, do, do we wanna have a consensus here that we move forward with? That I know you don't agree that, but if we have a majority of the board to move forward with adding that paragraph back in.
Yeah, the other um, the other missing element was the insurance, and I think as long as we have the indemnification clause in there.
Yeah, cause I think that's important for any organization as well, it's not just for.
And again, we're not trying to make it more burdensome, where they have to, you know, go out and purchase a liability policy, exactly.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to take a vote on what we do?
Nope, I will get it redrafted and we'll put it up for next meeting.
But I do need a motion for the Avatar Associate Assessing Services for two thousand twenty-six through two thousand thirty.
Take the motion to sign the contract with Avatar Associate Assessing Services for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty.
Sorry.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any other action items for next meetings? I think you've got a list, Ellen.
We have our presentation.
I'm stealing this. Yep.
Did I miss something?
Oh, solar, uh, we have somebody coming in from there, the uh, Seacoast Circuit Rider.
Oh.
About some energy savings, and we'll hopefully be able to shed some light on our solar.
So continued budget review, and then we've got that workshop added.
Yeah, and then the tax.
The tax leaning, uh, we've deed waivers and tax deeding.
Okay, so now we can move into public comment, just a reminder, if you'd like to come up for public comment, you have three minutes to make your comments to the board. You have to state your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Sam Hall, I'm representing my block eight two fifty five, Old Turnpike Road, and Nottingham Leander. Am I all set?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so upon, I have received a complaint about Mr. Sylvia. Um, I had called and I had um come down to the town and I had found that the planning board had changed my commercial use in a um commercial use application without my signature, okay? So, uh, that day Dale had given me an extremely hard time. Um, I did go to complain then, I haven't heard anything about it. Um, I have talked to the chief of police, she said they wanna trespass me. So I have a problem, cause they did this, this, this application without my signature and my knowledge. Market Basket got a Supreme Court, uh, that says you cannot do that, like that's against the law, so there's a Supreme Court ruling out there that I can give you a copy of, give it, take a copy of my application where they went and changed it, and the problem is, is when I go to the town, she's late. Um, the lights are on early, people are there early chit chatting, and you're talking about um money, and we don't have money for our taxes, and uh, I went there and I got copies and it says fifty cents a copy, I have no problem paying fifty cents a copy, but when the person there is making the copies and she isn't even charging you for it, well, there's another. So when you were going through the tax thing, I thought to myself, well, maybe you should look in this, maybe they should be punching a clock or whatever. Because I'm upset that the police chief has told me they wanna trespass me, and how am I supposed to do business to fix my property? Because the planning board, I went and met with the planning board, and they said to me, they want me to reapply for this application. How am I supposed to reapply for an application when I didn't even put it out there? So there's a real serious problem, and it could be leading the town to a lawsuit, because I didn't, never agreed to give up what I had, and they just took it from me. And now they expect me to reapply, I have no clue how to reapply, I can't go in your office, because I'm getting uh, escorted out of here by the police department. Um, Dale says to me, well, we don't do things like this in this town, well, I've been in real estate for forty years. I go to different towns from Tennessee, Florida, North Carolina, Vermont, um, Prince Edward Island, and I have never seen a town do this to anybody. They said, not in this town, the rules are like this in this town, what rules, where are they? They said, not in this town, the rules are like this in this town, what rules, where are they? Lay them out for us, because if we don't know what they are, how are we supposed to abide from them? All I wanted to do was.
Talia, you have thirty seconds.
All I wanted to do was look in my folder and see what happened, because when I called Dale and he slammed down the phone on me, I would like to know. What you plan on doing, because you, if this doesn't get taken care of, this is already in the Supreme Court, and it's a potential lawsuit. I never signed it, it should not be valid. And they're holding me to something that I didn't sign, that's, and saying it's valid.
So we still, we don't, that's outside of our purview, we have gotten the information that comes from it, but it has to go through the planning board, we can't.
It's not, it's not our purview, it's not the select board's.
There's different pillars, and we are not the planning board, I believe they've reviewed it, and I don't think that you're wrong in your statement, in the comparison to the Supreme Court case. I believe that they're going to review it, but there's absolutely nothing we can do.
So I think you need to continue this process with the planning board, as you've been instructed.
Correct.
Okay, no problem, but I'm getting threatened, you can talk to the police chief, she's saying they want, these people that work there. Want to trespass me when I go there to do business. Okay, I couldn't even get my folder, it took like pulling teeth for Mr. Sylvia to get my folder. I go to Northwood, cause I have a property in Northwood, they hand me my folder, they let me sit in the corner, they let me look through it all day long. Dale was like in the middle of everybody, you can't trust her, and I'm like, what are you talking about, I didn't even, when I first came, I didn't even know this piece of paper existed.
Okay, you're above and beyond your five minutes, but we, again, this is not part of the select board, you've had your few minutes to to comment.
Okay, so.
I encourage you to continue to work with the select board on the process.
So how do you work with somebody that you're gonna be police escorted out of the building? And the town put oil all over my brand new driveway.
Yeah, you have three minutes, that's all.
I'll be back next two weeks.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Alright, Don Salas, uh, to be very brief, at one of the select board meetings recently, you folks sat down and said, okay, we're not gonna wrap that new, that Ford truck you did buy. At a planning board meeting twelve years after, the truck's out being wrapped.
Nobody ever said that.
We said we were wrapping it.
I I opposed wrapping it, I was the only one who opposed wrapping it.
Thought you walled, you know.
Nope, just me.
Anyway, next item, um, biting the hand that feeds is totally unacceptable. And Mr. Steve Rollins definitely bit the hand that feeds, causing damage, so if you have a pet that attacks you and. And bites your hand, it tears you up, sends you, makes damage, it's not a good thing. We'll talk again, thank you.
Okay. Just to clarify, the select board is not in agreement with a lot of the claims you have been making about Mr. Rollins, and we're not gonna be taking any action against Mr. Rollins, so, just wanna state that.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Skip Sherwin's three forty stage road, um, I I'm basically here to request that you folks as a board rescind the cease and desist order. Who was recently assigned and obligated or whatever. One of the things that happens when you do that, is there needs to be a concerted effort to take similar action against all the rest of the people that violate. The zoning ordinance in town. That's a lot of people, not sure that's what you really wanna do here, I think rescinding it and working with the applicants, I know there's already been some working going on, but. This is a very difficult thing, I don't think you folks wanna go through the effort of identifying everyone in town that's violating. The zoning ordinance, but even if you took it as just the home occupation, there's a lot in town that's going on very similar to that. So, I'm here to request that you rescind the cease and desist.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any other public comment? We do have non-public for this evening.
Alright, uh, do you wanna make your statement, or I'll make one first, make the motion, go.
I would go into non.
Yes.
Alright, I'll make the motion to move into non-public, par say ninety one dash A colon three two A and B.
Get a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherrill.
Aye, Charlotte Fife.
At the close of the non-public, we'll reopen the meeting, um, and then close again, there will be no more business done at this meeting. See you on December first. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.